The meeting of the township, I'm assuming Nora, you've got everything?
Yes, you're.
Great, okay. Meeting of the township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, September 11, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10, colon, four, dash, six, at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Bavaria.
Here.
Councilman Di Piero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
And Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
All right, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
All right, this meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Bring to the attention of this board. Hearing and seeing none, we are going to have a slight change in our agenda, but I think we'll do the resolutions first, right?
Yes.
I figured that. All right, you have in your packet the different resolutions. And who can vote? So, for the Minor Subplan Site Plan Subcommittee, I understand we're changing the resolution in some way, is that?
No, there is just one word correction.
Okay. For members of the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee, do I have a motion to approve the Hudson Distribution Services?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
A motion to approve the resolution for application number 23, colon, five, one, six, Hudson Distribution Services, 701 Jefferson Road, block 741, lot 3, Zone SED 5A, Minor Site Plan for a cannabis warehouse and distribution operation.
All right, if we hold a moment, we can have a member of the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee join us here, as Mr. DeDeeche has arrived.
Okay. Second meth. For the motion.
Mr. DeDeeche, we've had a, just to let you know, we've had a motion and a second on the Minor Site Plan Resolution for Hudson Distribution Services. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
DeDeeche.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Matt. Yes.
All right. Moving right along, we now have an application 23, colon, five, 21, MJR Builders. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mealy?
A motion to approve the resolution for application 23, colon, five, two, one, MJR Builders LLC, 150 Parsippany Boulevard, block 452, lot 1.01, Major Soil Movement.
Second, Napolitano.
All right, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Uh, Di Piero?
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Matt. Matt?
Uh, yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Von Aiken?
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Did you ask Mr. DeDeeche?
Uh, yes, and DeDeeche.
Yes.
And Dinsmore says yes, too. All right, then we have application number 23, colon, five, 20, Federal Realty. Do I have somebody willing to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. DeDeeche?
Motion to approve application number 23, colon, five, two, zero, Federal Realty, 1123 Route 46, Block 729, Lot 7, Minor Site Plan with C variances for parking requirements.
Do we have a second?
Second, Mealy.
Hi, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
DeDeeche?
Yes.
Di Piero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Von Aiken?
Yes.
All right, then. We get to move on. The agenda is fairly full tonight, but we're going to start with a discussion of the discovering, determining if an area is in need of redevelopment. And I'm going to turn it over to our planner.
All right, good evening, everyone. So, the property is under consideration for an area in need of redevelopment, our Two and Three Campus Drive. They're shown on the map there with Two Campus Drive being the north property, 3.20, and Three Campus Drive is 3.12, the south property on the plant. So, the governing body has directed the planning board to undertake preliminary investigation for these properties to determine if they qualify under the redevelopment law for an area in need. It is important to note that while there are eight criteria that can qualify for an area in need, the properties only need to meet one. So, the existing sites are on Campus Drive. They are zoned Affordable Housing Districts 3A and 3B. They, um, property 3.12 has some wetlands on the southern area. I'm going to move to toward the end of the report on page 32, which goes into detail about the specific properties. Two Campus Drive is, was formerly developed with a three-story office building. The building was utilized by a single tenant from its construction in 1985 until 2014. And then the building remained vacant until it was demolished in 2022. During a site visit back in July, I was able to walk right on the site. It's an unsecured site. It has a driveway that's blocked with a gate that I walked around. It also has a large depression that was filled with water at the time, also only partially fenced in, which, you know, creates potential health and safety hazard. Given this information, the discontinuance of the office use, this property qualifies under Criterion B and as an unsecured site with a large area of standing water. It also creates the weird, the luxurious land use. The unsecured water provides an opportunity for drowning accidents as well as breeding ground for mosquitoes and other pests, so it qualifies under Criterion D. Properties are also located in the Metropolitan Planning Area of the state's, on the state plan, which will qualify under Criteria H. For the second property, which is the southern property, Three Campus Drive, it is an undeveloped site. It does have some stormwater improvements and a parking lot that serves neighboring 3.7. There's no evidence that it's been otherwise developed since the adoption, or 10 years prior to the adoption of the resolution authorizing this study. And it also contains wetlands, the specific analysis of which development is beyond the scope of this report. Additionally, it's also located within the state's Metropolitan Planning Area, having it qualify under Criterion H. So, under these four criterias, the discontinuing use of the office building, the unimproved vacant lot, the vacant and unsecured site, and the location within the Metropolitan Planning Area, it's our recommendation that this study area qualifies as an area in need under redevelopment law.
Okay, is there any, what's it, what is its current zoning?
It is affordable housing, 3A and 3B.
Okay.
So, they're two different zones.
And, all right. So, it hasn't been developed under that so far. It's been a while. Are there any questions of our planner on this? Mr. Von Aken?
So, as I understand it, both these properties are vacant specifically because the buildings were torn down as a result of the site plans that had been approved by this board within the last two or three years.
Right. But it was also, the building that was torn down was vacant for eight years.
Okay, but what's wrong with the site plan that's already been approved? Why hasn't that moved forward? Why does a, why does a vacant lot which has a valid site plan and in need of redevelopment when it is already in the process of being developed?
Well, it did get the approvals, and as we know, we have an amended site plan before us this evening. Why would we designate a redevelopment area? It, it gives additional options to the town for funding and getting this project done.
Okay, I guess that's not really part of our jurisdiction to worry about how the town finances things.
Yeah, and it's an existing condition.
But it's hard for me to understand why a project which is in development phases right now needs redevelopment when the existing project hasn't yet been developed. Is there significant change to the site plan? Is something going on here?
So, with the redevelopment study, we're not looking at what's been approved. It's just that it hasn't been developed. So, it hasn't been developed in over 10 years, whether there's approval on it or not. It hasn't moved forward for whatever the reason may be.
All right, it's only been an approved site plan for a short period of time, as I understand it. I'm struggling to understand what, what this is doing to benefit either one hour of affordable housing or why this is happening at all. It seems like a completely unnecessary step for the planning board to be reviewing this. Is the site plan going to change at all?
Um, I believe, you know, we'll hear testimony about that. The, the council made the decision to look into it and, you know, the planning board's job is just to see if it qualifies under those standards.
The council may have something else in mind to add to it, and I don't see that.
That requires redevelopment, though?
I think this is more paper shuffling than any major, major work. I think it gives the council a chance to examine some alternatives that might be more attractive for the town.
Okay, well, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Michael, but you seem like you want.
It still means our commitment for affordable housing.
Oh, that's the most important thing. Yeah.
Keeps the court over Mac.
If I can.
As I said, is that accurate? It does not affect our affordable housing plan at all? We're not losing any units? Is that, how does that play into this?
But the redevelopment is only looked at by the planning board, but the council, the policy decisions are made by the council.
Right.
So, that's, you know, that's not something you were trying to explain. So, it's not for this board to decide the policy issues, it's the council's.
We're just, we're just going through, looking at and saying that, that there's nothing inherently wrong with further redevelopment over what we already approved, because the council will then examine it and determine if it's, in their opinion, better to be modified.
Okay.
And if I can recall, it's not losing any units either.
Okay.
No, but I think it has to, but it has to do with different types of units that are actually more geared towards special, special needs and stuff like that, individuals, which doesn't put any school-aged children in the schools.
All right.
I just have a comment if I can, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Napolitano?
So, we've done a couple of these area in need of redevelopments in the last couple of months, and some of the ones we looked at, they were, you know, buildings that were falling apart and I think somewhere rats infested, I mean, some, you know, leaky roofs. There were some in bad shape, and we obviously granted that. I, I'm not saying, these are just two empty lots right now. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
With a ditch and a road. I mean, that's far cry from leaky roofs and, you know, buildings in disrepair. So, I'm just trying to wrap my head around that as well. Just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, my members of the board? Does our attorney have any comments on?
I think, Mr. Chairman, you made the point in that this designation gives us a little bit more tools in the toolbox, if you will, the governing body being able to finally get this project done after 10 years, eight years of a vacant property, two years in development. It's kind of a long time. My guess is with financing, this gives the governing body the ability to offer some more attractive financing to redevelopers to finally get it.
I mean, if we, if we have an option for an even better program than what was originally approved, I think we should give the governing bodies that option.
That seems reasonable.
And ultimately, the site plan that's in place is in place. Any modification would come back to the board and.
So, the site plan review would still come back to us? We could verify that all the affordable housing is still in place the way it needs to be.
And the governing body can even implement further restrictions if they so choose to say it revises the plan and says that there were some modifications, but it will all come back to the board for you.
Okay, well, it's awkward, but I guess there's nothing from a planning board position that I can see wrong with it.
Is that coming back to the board in like 20 minutes in this next thing on the agenda? Is that what we're talking about? Okay.
All righty. Should we be asking for public comment on this, or are we just, is this just us? We're just certainly determining this. We have occasionally, yeah.
We have occasionally.
All right, are there any members of the public who have any questions on this or have any comments to make with regard to determining that this property is in need of redevelopment? Hearing and seeing none, that closes that part of the case. Do I hear a motion determining that this is indeed a property in need of, or two properties in need of redevelopment? Mr. Mayor, do you?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that Two Campus Drive, block 202, lot 3.20, and Three Campus Drive, block 202, lot 3.7, qualify for an area in need of redevelopment.
Is it 3.7 or 3.12?
I'm sorry.
Yep. Yeah, no, the, the agenda's got the wrong address on it.
3.12, block 202, lot 3.20, and 3.12.
For the reasons stated.
For the reasons stated, thank you. I should wear these.
Second, DeDeeche. Mr. DeDeeche, thank you very much. Nora, would you call the vote, please?
Yes.
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 Mealy.
Yes.
Yes.
Napolitano?
No.
Shaw?
Yes.
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes. All right, we're going to send it back to the governing body and let them determine what they want to do with it. All right, that gets us to move on to the next items on our agenda tonight in our massive quantity of paper here. I wonder how many woods forests we had to kill for this. We have on our agenda tonight, application number 23, colon, five, one, five, Avalon Bay Communities, Two Campus Drive, block 202, lot 3.20, and Four Campus Drive, block 202, lot 3.2, as well as 1633 Littleton Drive, block 202, lot 3.1. And we have amended preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for construction of a multifamily building with surface parking facilities, indoor and outdoor amenities, and landscaping. This had been previously carried from August 21st, 2023. Mr. Inglesino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to be here. Chairman's mayor, board members, professionals, and members of the public. John Inglesino here of Inglesino Taylor on behalf of the applicant Avalon Bay Communities, Inc. Avalon Bay is the contract purchaser of the projects known as Two Campus and Three Campus. Those are the properties that the project is actually going to be built on. There are other properties that are sort of involved in the project in an ancillary kind of way because of easements and the like, but the development is going to occur on Two Campus and Three Campus. So, technically, the Two Campus project is located at lot 3.20 and block 202. Again, that's Two Campus, lot 3.2 and block 202, Four Campus and lot 3.1 in block 202, 1633 Littleton Road. But again, those properties are ancillary. And the Three Campus project is located at lot 3.12 and block 202. That's Three Campus, lot 3.7 and block 202, One Campus, and lot 3.8 in block 202, Seven Campus. But again, the latter two projects are just in there because of easements and so forth we have to notice from those properties.
Are you suggesting we do all of this all at the same time, so we have two different applications being heard simultaneously?
Yeah, they're, they're related, I think, as you'll, as you'll see. So, yes.
Are there any consequences to our?
As long as, I think, we'll see, you know, your professionals offer their opinions properly in order, because the variances are going to be slightly different. In terms of the facts, resolutions will most likely mirror each other. For the purposes of the statement of facts, and then the conclusions will slightly differ based on the relief being sought as well as preliminary information, but, you know, if we can just do it so the facts are as closely lined up as possible, that'd be great. No problem doing it that way, Mr. Chairman.
You have no problem. I just want to make sure the public understands that we are doing both application 23, colon, five, 15, and hearing both application 23, colon, five, one, seven simultaneously because they are highly related and very interrelated.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
So, Two Campus received a vote of approval from this board on February 22nd, 2021, and the memorialization resolution was adopted on May 3rd of 2021. And the approval for Two Campus was for 172 units with a 20% set aside for affordable housing. Three Campus received a vote of approval on April 5th of 2021, and the memorialization resolution was adopted on June 7th of 2021. And that approval was for 238 total units with a 20% set aside. Both projects are in Parsipony's Housing Element and Fair Share Plan for Round 3. Avalon Bay is acquiring both projects together. Again, so for efficiency, presentation purposes, we're presenting these modifications together. Now, with respect to Two Campus, the applicant does not propose any increase in the total number of units. The applicant does propose to enhance the amenity package by proposing the installation of two hardscaped and soft-scape courtyard to include additional amenities such as more landscaping, outdoor dining areas, including tables and chases, barbecue areas, fire pits, pet spa, lawn areas, outdoor furniture, outdoor work areas, shade areas, and decorative paver patios. The applicant is also seeking additional signage for which three variances are being sought, and you'll hear testimony regarding those variances shortly. With respect to Three Campus, again, the applicant does not propose any increase in the, in the total number of units. The applicant does seek likewise to enhance the amenity package for Three Campus by installing outdoor dining areas, tables and chairs, an outdoor exercise area, playground, barbecue areas, fire pit, pet spa, a pet park at this location, lawn areas, outdoor lounging furniture, shade trees, and again, decorative paver patios. With respect to Three Campus, the applicant is also seeking signage for Two variances, which are being sought, and again, you will hear testimony on those variances shortly. There are proposed revisions regarding parking relative to both applications, which will be discussed by the project engineer, Craig Herman. Suffice it to say that we are proposing increasing parking on Two Campus by one space, and we are reducing the number of parking spaces on Three Campus, but we are staying compliant with the minimum parking requirements for both Two and Three Campus. We will meet the standards. Lastly, the applicant is proposing revisions relative to affordable housing. This is really what links the applications together. Such revisions will decrease the number of family rental affordable housing units on both sites by 31 units, a substantial reduction. However, the project will retain the required 82 affordable housing credits in the aggregate for both Two and Three Campus. Eighty-two credits is the aggregate number of credits that you're required to provide these two sites under your plan, and indeed, with the 20% set asides that were previously approved, and, and that number of 82 credits for the town will stay in place, but you'll have 31 fewer family rental units in doing that. And we're going to do that by dedicating 11 units with 31 bedrooms to serve those in need of supportive housing, and you'll hear more testimony about that. We are requesting five variances, or five, I'm sorry, we're requesting five waivers. First, we're requiring, requesting a waiver of the traffic study. Again, we're not increasing the number of units at all. You've heard plenty of testimony on that. I'm sure you don't want to hear it again. There's really no need to do it. Nothing's changing in that regard. Same thing really with the environmental assessment, Highlands exemption, and submission of existing and proposed storm drainage design and improvement. All of those are staying the same, unchanged. You'll hear, you know, you can hear testimony if you want on that, but none of that's changed. And also a waiver for submission of separate sheets, this is somewhat of a technical waiver, for final major site plan and preliminary site plan. We received review, two review letters by the board professionals regarding Two Campus, ARH report dated August 7th of this year, and GPI report dated July 20th of this year. We also have a letter from the Parsipony Water Department dated July 13th of this year. And regarding Three Campus, we have also received reports from ARH, also dated August 7th of this year, GPI report also dated July 20th, and from the Parsipony Water Department, also dated July 13th. Mr. Chairman, I have four witnesses. First, my first witness will be Ron.
We've got a whole, long list of waivers we have to talk about first.
We do, okay. Well, you want to do that, and then I'll introduce my witnesses.
We usually like to do, get that out of the way upfront.
Okay, I know you do, that's why.
Can I raise a question?
Raise your question.
John, the affordable housing units, credits for one unit as proposed, credits for per bedroom, that's worth expanding on.
And, and you'll hear testimony on that? We're going to expand on that a lot. I'm just introducing what we're going to present in the application.
That'll answer some of the questions that were up here.
Yes, you're going to hear testimony, and you'll have an opportunity to ask questions, and we will do the very best we can to address all of your questions, and I'm confident we can do that.
Okay, we have some waivers in our.
All right, so I guess we'll take them separate. We'll start with Two Campus. The waivers requested were for the Highlands Exemption Determination, Traffic Study, environmental Assessment, and the separate sheets for the final preliminary site plan, as Mr. Inglesino said, being that's an amended plan, and most of this was previously discussed, and the applicant will provide additional testimony that, you know, it doesn't affect those studies. We don't have any objection to that. And do I do them one at a time?
Is there anybody who has any questions on the waivers as presented for, what, Two Campus Drive?
That was Two Campus. Three Campus is very similar.
Would, would I have a motion approving the waivers for the Two Campus Drive application?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Napolitano, do I have a second?
Second meth.
Second meth. All right, call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing not now.
So, then we move to Three Campus. We have the same waivers requested. In addition, the existing proposed storm drainage design improvements, which give testimony that there are no changes proposed, so we have no objection to those either.
All right, any discussion on the waivers for Three Campus Drive? They're fundamentally the same. We've kind of heard them all before, as has been pointed out to us. Do I have a motion approving the waivers? Do I have a motion approving the waivers in case 23:517? Yes, Mr. Matt?
A motion to approve as requested.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All right, call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Chairman. I have four witnesses. Ronald Laddell of Avalon Bay, who will briefly familiarize the board with Avalon Bay. Craig Herman of P S and S is the project civil engineer. Mr. Herman will also serve as the applicant's planner regarding the signed variances requested. Louz Delmar Rosado of Bizarre Design is the project architect. Tom Carmen of Malillo Bauer and Carmen is the project landscape architect. And lastly, I'll be calling back Mr. Laddell, who will address the issues of affordable housing and in particular supportive housing. So without further ado, Mr. Chairman, let me call Mr. Laddell.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? It'll be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
Yes, I do.
Name and address for record, please, by your last.
Ronald Laddell, L-A-D-E-L-L, Avalon Bay Communities, 105 Elm Street, Westfield, New Jersey.
Mr. Laddell, you're employed by Avalon Bay Communities, Inc., is that correct?
Yes.
And what's your position, and how long have you served in that capacity?
I am the Senior Vice President of Avalon Bay Communities, Inc. in New Jersey. I'm the senior executive in New Jersey. I've been employed for Avalon Bay almost 21 years in that position.
Can you describe for the board briefly who Avalon Bay Communities is?
Avalon Bay Communities is a public company. We own, operate, manage, construct, develop rental apartments throughout the country, particularly from Boston now to Florida, Texas, Denver, Seattle, and California. We've been in New Jersey since 1988. As I said, I joined in 2002. We own, operate, manage, construct, develop. So what we do is we develop property, hopefully Two and Three Campus that we're talking about tonight. We find the sites, we work with planning boards, boards of adjustment, governing bodies, seek approvals. When we're ready to build, we act as our own general contractor. We self-perform. We don't hire third-party contractors, we hire subs. And on a site like this, probably over 200 employees at one point, when we're full steam going ahead. We also manage all of our properties throughout the country. So we don't use third-party managers. So what I'd like to tell governing bodies, planning boards, et cetera, is if there's any issue that occurs on an Avalon Bay community, you call the Avalon Bay person. And that would be ultimately me, or they have a construction, and we're right in Westfield, New Jersey. From a scale point of view, we're a large company. We have about 90,000 apartment homes in over 300 communities throughout the country, about 7,000 apartment homes in about 20 communities in New Jersey. We're building five communities right now, actually two in Princeton, one in Somerville, one in West Windsor, and one in Motville. In addition, in Morris County, I'm going to leave something out, you'll correct me, we have communities in Wharton, Forum Park, Booton. We're building in Motville, I'm forgetting one. Wharton. And that may be it in Morris County. We plan on starting construction in Wayne later this year, and then we have other projects planned for next year. We have what I think is advantages among other companies, it's great to self-perform, and it's great to self-manage. We have a lot of line of sight with regards to what we do. You should also know that we're not what I call a merchant builder. Merchant builders are entities that find opportunities, build it, and typically during lease-up, will sell the property to a third party. I'm not knocking at this as planned, it's just not what we do. We will be, hopefully with approval, your partner for decades. We sell very, very few properties year by year. In fact, the oldest property we have in New Jersey is in West Windsor, and it was finished in 1988. We've redeveloped the property twice during that time period. So what we look to do is working with, whether it's the planning board or governing body members, I know there's two sitting, looking at me right now, we want to be your partner from a long-term perspective. And I've talked to people in town, I'm familiar with the town, I think, I didn't say this, I'm a local product. I grew up in West Orange, I live in Livingston, I have two Rutgers degrees, I'm the classic New Jersey born-and-bred developer trying to operate in the state of New Jersey.
Your project on Route 40, is it that on Route 46?
In Motville.
Right. So maybe people are familiar with it.
So this is the property that if you go from Esses County, where I live, out to Old Bloomfield Avenue, right when it intersects Route 46, it was known as the junkyard, affectionately. And by the way, what that means is I spent, and I'll say to all of you publicly, about $4 million cleaning up the junkyard. Lowe's was approved to build there in, right before the Great Financial Recession, back in 2008. It stayed, they didn't build, stayed as a junkyard. We got approvals. By the way, I just want to point out that that site is part of Motville's Affordable Housing Plan. It got Motville Subs certified for their Affordable Housing Plan. We now were able through the D O T to get access right to Route 46, not on Old Bloomfield Avenue anymore. You know, there's the restaurants at the end of that street there. So our residents, and we're just about to start lease-up, I think next month, we're delivering our first unit, will be able to access Ingress and Egress right under 46. We should also point out, I should point out, that the site is about 27 acres, we're only disturbing seven. The rest of it is wetlands and reserved, so we're able to fit, and that's 350 units, by the way. So it's a large project. I'll tell you one other story if you don't mind. In Wharton, and some people know this, right off Exit 34A and B on Dewey, there's a site, if you see, on Route 80, up on the top of the hill. People said to me, it's like a billy goat has to go up there. But Mayor Chegwin and I made a deal for a property that was not developed for decades, lay fallow. We were able to develop four of the eight acres, also an affordable housing component for their affordable housing plan. And we are, I'm proud to say this, the second-largest taxpayer in Wharton, probably be the first soon enough. And there are many other locations throughout New Jersey where we are, because rental apartments derive, you know, reasonable, these are, you know, through pilots, tax payments, the second-largest taxpayer in most of these towns we operate in. And because, as I said, we don't sell, we're going to be in these towns for many, many years. We also have no fear, and the planner described some of the challenges of these two sites, with environmentally challenged sites, we're able to do that, we're able to clean it up. And because even if there's a deed restriction, it's us, we're going to control that for decades to come.
And because you're a public company, you're very transparent, correct?
Correct.
And there's a website that people can go to to find out anything and everything they want to know about Avalon Bay, correct?
We've done this before, as you can tell. We play off each other. So Avalon is really transparent, we're public. So avaloncommunities.com or avalonbay.com. You can see every one of our 300 communities throughout the state, throughout the country. You can see the design, everything in New Jersey, which is over 20, shouldn't be 25 for the ones that are under construction. Look at our unit plans, look at our facade. I will want to point out one thing, though. If you do do that, and I would encourage you to do so, every community is different. Every facade is different, every design is different, the bedroom distribution is different. We never take, respect to my architect behind me, never use the same drawings that we did once, use it again. And we do that for a lot of different reasons. One, and most importantly, we want to reflect the town. We want the town's input from the planning board and professionals as to what makes sense. And secondly, we don't ever want to be accused of being a cookie-cutter developer. When people say that, it, skin, you know, freaks out. Every one of our communities is different. And we would do everything from, and these are, yes, you're here, remember, four-story buildings. We do, in some cases, three-story or two-story townhomes. We do, in other communities throughout the country, actually 40- and 50-story buildings, five-story buildings. So we're completely adaptable and amenable and chameleon-like with regard to what we think is appropriate, and we want to make sure it works from day one. We don't want to make the mistake when you own a property for decades. But feel free to check us out. Transparently, myself or the company, we're completely on the web, or Yahoo Finance, or if you want to find out about us, you can do so.
I have no further questions for Mr. Laddell, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have questions on this witness, on this testimony?
Thank you.
Mr. Napolitano?
Thank you. How is the Avalon plan better than the previous plan, would you say, in your opinion?
So I want to be politically correct. My seller, when they did this, had never, see if I get this correct, with limited exceptions, had only built in Jersey City. They really, Morris plans a little later, but generally had done very, very few multifamily residential. And in full disclosure, they got your disapproval, they never were going to build it. The company had already shifted beyond what they did. That used to be the largest office owner in New Jersey, was Matt Kelly.
Matt Kelly.
Matt Kelly converted to Verus. They decided many years ago to get out of the office business, a little late, by the way, but nevertheless, they got there. Now they're a multifamily company who is losing money on a quarterly basis at this point, it's public, so I'm not saying anything, that's secret. They looked at the site differently than we look, and in many cases, they sell. They were, and now changed to be a merchant builder. So what a lot of merchant builders do is they're in for the quick hit. So they want the pizzazz. They're not looking at what I call the back of the house to make sure it works, whether it's trash or recycling, or how we're going to operate the property. They also did redundant things that make no sense to them, two pools. I should also point out, it's not relevant here, but we're buying their two properties in Roseland, and we're approved there, too. And there again, you know, two parking decks, two pools, it made no sense. And the thought was, they just wanted to get these approvals, go out to the marketplace, which they did, and get someone to buy it. I feel fortunate that we're here to buy it. And by the way, we went in Roseland, and we changed one, and we're changing another, changed those site plans, too. So that's one answer. The other answer is that, from an amenity point of view, when you own 300 communities and 90,000 units, and you get feedback from your residents on a regular basis, we think we know what works. We're also not static. We want to learn. Pet spas 10 years ago, good. Never earned them, right? E V charging stations, you know, we do it for a lot of reasons, but the world never stays the same. You want to keep adapting yourselves. So we do it from the amenities, design, the unit design, oh, it makes sense. We do focus groups with our residents on a regular basis. Everything's now, you know, through this. It used to be in-person focus groups. Now they want to sign on with this, and we get the feedback. We're just different companies, I don't want to knock them anymore. But we do things differently, and we told them from day one when we signed the contract, one day we're going to be in front of the planning board, is what you did, walk one to pay X dollars, I need to change certain things. And by the way, they understood that and agreed to do that. But that's, you'll hear a lot more in a few minutes.
Sure.
That's the top level, I would say.
I didn't hear anything about pickleball courts, though.
So...
All those things you're changing, Mr. English, I didn't hear pickleball courts.
Well, so there's no pickleball courts planned here. Pickleball is, you know, is noise. And I'm only laughing because, I just have to tell you, this is Napolitano, this, I took a pickleball once a month ago, I played twice in my life, and I was playing my second time, and middle-aged men had this issue, they have a calf problem, and I pulled my calf. I'm just done with P T, but I am ready to go back to pickleball, and I'm going to join because I do like the sport. I think we'd like to put pickleball, but some pickleballs, I think, you work in certain places, which is great from the sound point of view. And if we have a community that had some land and you can avoid the noise issue, I think we would do pickleball. But we used to do tennis courts, we used to do basketball courts.
Yes.
We don't do any of that. But pickleball, at least in my opinion, is probably going to stay. It's a lot of fun.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Any other members of the board have any questions, our professionals? You're good. Are there any members of the public who have questions on this witness, on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Just one quick, real quick question. You're probably going to have somebody else answer that. I'm assuming a lot of the little details that we worked so hard on in the previous one are going to be completely redone, so that instead of having two or three E V stations or whatever the ones were required, you're going to probably have a state-of-the-art load shedding thing where you can literally have an outlet at every, every location and not have it be an expensive thing.
So how about I answer this way?
Okay.
I truly appreciate the effort that all you're doing, the pay doesn't cover the effort that you're putting into it.
Right.
Let me put it that way. I served in Mr. Lagana's seat in my town of Livingston, and I served as a member of the zoning board of adjustment previously. Thank you for your service with regard to it. No, it's not going to waste. There's a lot of what you did previously that we're going to use again. I think Mr. English is going to describe, we're tweaking some things to make it better. But the most important part is, and I've been at Avalon Bay almost 21 years, this is the first time, and I've known prior members of the governing body, prior mayors, to finally have the opportunity to build in Parsippany and be here, is really gratifying, because it is, I'm the local boy, to be close to it. So we hope that we can do this, and potentially do more in Parsippany down the road, too.
So pork roll or Taylor ham?
I'm a North Jersey guy, you know what that means.
Yeah.
Here's the answer. I haven't asked that in a long time. I'll be back in a little bit.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me call Craig Herman of P S S, our civil engineer.
Does he raise his right hand to be sworn? Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? It'll be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys? Yes. Name and address for the record, please, by your last. Craig Herman, H E R M A N N. I'm a senior project manager with P S and S, Paulus Salkowski in Starcourt. Address is 3 Mountain View Road in Warren, New Jersey. Counsel, please qualify Mr. Herman.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, can you please provide the board with your educational, professional background, and provide any licenses that you possess?
Sure. I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University College of Engineering.
Excuse me, just talk a little closer to the microphone there. I'm getting hand signals from the back.
Just talk into it. We don't want to mess with it, because we know it's not... Okay.
Okay, I apologize. I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University College of Engineering in 1996. I hold licenses in the professional engineer in New Jersey since 2004, and I have a planner's license in New Jersey. I have 26 years of experience graduating in 1996, and I've been accepted as expert witness in both private and municipal sites in over 13 municipalities in New Jersey, including such towns as Tewksbury, Hackettstown, Hoboken, Bayonne, and also in Parsippany for an application, probably a little over 10 years ago.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we respectfully request the board to recognize Mr. Herman as an expert in both the areas of civil engineering and as a planner.
Any questions by the board? Yes, Mr. Matt?
Just one question on the planner credential. Did you get planner credential through examination or through application?
Through application then examination.
Okay, I meant, like, I guess previously engineers were eligible to just get it with just an application without examination?
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, I had to take an examination.
Okay. Have you ever prepared a master plan?
I have not prepared a master plan, but I have provided planning credentials.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this background? Nope. Hearing and seeing none. Counsel?
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Herman, can you please provide the engineering aspects of the proposed revised plans for both Two and Three Campus?
Sure. So I have up, one of the exhibits we have is an aerial of the project area. It's consistent with the previous...
So why don't we, why don't we mark that, I guess, as A1?
A1.
I'm trying to think if we can move those so that the public can actually see it. You just have to describe it, I guess.
That's A1, and that's a...
We want to let our planners, planning board, see it, too. It's not always easy.
We'll just have to think of it being digital eventually.
So that's an aerial of existing conditions?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
And other certain properties that are outlined in red?
Yes. So we have outlined the two sites that are part of the application, Three Campus Drive, which is known as Block 202, Lot 3.12, and also Two Campus, which is also known as Block 202, Lot 3.20.
Continue.
So just a description of the area to orientate everybody. This is the, an office complex with Campus Drive bisexit, and it runs from Littleton Road to Dryden Way to the east. You have Littleton Road on the left side of the red squares, which is also 202. And just to the south is Route 10, so you have the Route 10 and Littleton Road intersection. Two Campus has access directly to Campus Drive. There will be two proposed driveways for the proposed building. And then Three Campus, there is an internal access road that runs between One and Three Campus. And while the Three Campus project site is located right on Campus Drive, access will be via two driveways to that internal access road. So what I'd like to do tonight is, since these two projects are basically being presented to the board together, I'm going to kind of hop back and forth a little bit between the two projects. So I'm going to step up to the boards for a minute.
If you could take the microphone, if you're going to speak.
So what I have up here are two color renderings, one for Two Campus Drive, one for Three Campus Drive. Drive.
Why don't we mark that as A2?
Is that sheet that previously submitted as part of the application?
As the sheet, as it's colored up.
They're colorized versions. And what we did was, is we provided bubbles around the changes, so.
What sheet was that as part of the submission?
Sheet C5.
So it's a colorized version of sheet C5?
Correct. With some notes related to the changes, related to an amended site plan approval to the initial approval.
Okay.
So should I call 3 Campus A2 and then 2 Campus A3?
Sure.
Yes. Is it the same sheet number for A3?
Yes.
C5.
Let me ask a quick question. Is 1 Campus Drive the GAF building?
Yes.
Is that, we're hearing about that also right now? Do you guys own that property as well?
No.
Oh, all right. So why don't we keep bringing up 1 Campus Drive then?
So again, I apologize. It gets a little confusing. But when we're talking about properties that are part of the application, there are existing easements, cross easements, and things that affect other properties in the area. And we have to notice from those properties. So they're technically considered part of the project. But the buildings, the project is you'll know it, see it, people living there is only on 2 Campus and 3 Campus. All the other properties that you see are.
So 1 Campus is on here as a lot, but you're not touching it. The building could be there. Gotcha. Okay. Sorry, just wanted to clarify that.
Same follow-up question, more on the 2 Campus, 4 Campus side. The corner lot, I think it's Lot 3.11, that was sort of part of the original application, and it wasn't going to be disturbed, but it's now demolished. And it's covered in itself. What is the story? How does that play? Is that your lot or not your lot?
1633.
No, Avalon Bay is not under contract to buy that property. Avalon's only under contract by 2 and 3 Camps.
Gotcha.
Who demolished that building, then?
Veris.
Well, I think our understa, we can't testify to it for sure, but our understanding is Veris demolished the building.
Okay, so I'm going to start off with some information on 3 Campus. So 3 Campus is, again, Lot 3.12 and Block 202. It's a 10-acre site. That is the color rendering on the right. It's located within the ADH 3B Affordable Housing District. And currently, it is developed with a surface parking lot that was formerly, formerly supported the 1 Campus building, which it no longer does. Small parking lot will be removed and the, for the proposed site development. The site access for 3 Campus is, although it has frontage on Campus Drive, two proposed driveways will be located off of the internal drive, internal roadway that has an intersection with 3 Campus Drive. And there is a detention system existing and also wetlands to the south of the project, which will remain as it is and will remain To jump over to 2 Campus, 2 Campus is the five, five-acre site. It fronts on Campus Drive. And as you can see, it'll have two access points to Campus Drive. 2 Campus is located in the ADHD 3A Affordable Housing District. And it was a, it was developed in a three-story office building, which testimony was already provided that the buildings were demolished. Access to the project, again, as I said, will be to, by two full movement driveways to the site, right to Campus Drive. And there is an existing detention system located along Campus Drive that will remain and just be upgraded for project. So now to get into a little bit more specifics on the actual development of the site. And as we talked about, we are here tonight for an amended site plan application. And the site plan, I'm going to go over a little bit detail on what changes were made to the plan, but there was nothing significant in terms of a change, as we talked about the number of units or related to the site, any significant changes to the site layout. So the two major items are, you know, the total number of units, which we had testimony before, where the prior approval had 238 units. And this amended application still has 238 units. There's a little bit of a change in unit mix, which the architect will talk about in a little bit. As far as the parking for 3 Campus, the prior approval had, was required that 457 parking spaces. And the proposals had 457 parking spaces. Now, this amended site plan, based off of the unit count, now requires 455 parking spaces, based strictly on RSIS. Removing, using the 69 EV parking spaces that we're proposing and asking for the credit for it, we have an EV credit of 45 spaces, which reduces the required parking down to 410 spaces. And we're proposing 416 parking spaces, which is, consists of 202 surface parking spaces around the site and 194 garage parking spaces, which totals to 416. And the project is proposing 69 EV-ready, make-ready parking spaces, all within the garage. Just to touch on 2 Campus and those two significant items, again, in terms of total number of units, the prior approval had 172 units proposed, and this amended application still maintains 172 units, which, again, some changes in the unit makeup, which we'll hear more from the architect in a little bit. The prior approval had a requirement of 330 spaces. And the amended, I mean, and the proposed was 330 spaces for the prior approval. Now, in the amended application, the requirement is for 314 spaces. And we're proposing 331 spaces, which includes 286 on-site, and then 45 shared parking spaces in 4 Campus, which is the site just to the right or to the east of 2 Campus. So the total is 331 spaces proposed, where 314 are required. So the next item I want to run through on the two projects are the zoning table. And in terms of 3 Campus, all of the bulk requirements have been, are met, as they were in the previous approval. And there were two variances that were approved. And there are no changes to those two variances. For the front yard setback, where 50 feet was required, 40 feet was proposed in a prior application, which was approved, we're now proposing 40 feet in this application, so there's no change. Minimum parking from, minimum parking setback from the building in the prior application, where 10 feet is required, we proposed 2.6 feet. And in this application, we again proposed at 2.6 feet. One item in, on the plans, with a typographical error, where we had indicated 2.01 feet, was proposed, but that will be revised in the next round of plans to show the 2.6 feet, which is what is proposed and which is consistent with the original approval. All the rest of the bulk requirements, still remaining compliance with the, with the zoning requirements for the zone. And as Mr. Inglesino had talked about before, we're requesting two variances. They're both sign variances. The first one is for building-mounted signs, which none are permitted, and we're proposing two. And one of those building-mounted signs is proposed to be a projection shot sign, which, excuse me, extends three feet, three feet, seven inches away from the building, where 18 inches is permitted. So that's for 3 Campus. So for 2 Campus, again, the zoning bulk requirements are consistent with the previous approval. The bulk requirements are compliant with the zone, except for the variances that were already received as part of the prior approval. And those variances have not changed. Those variances include maximum lot coverage by buildings, 70% is permitted. And the original application, as well as this application, proposed 73.7%, which was approved. Side yard setback, where 10 feet is proposed, the original application, one foot was, I'm sorry, 10 feet is permitted, required, one foot was proposed and approved, and we are now proposing one foot also. The minimum parking setback from the property line, 10 feet is required. The original application had one foot, which is approved as a variance, and one foot is now proposed. And then for max retaining wall height, four feet in the front yard, six foot in the side yard are what's required or permitted. The original application proposed 7.1 feet, and the proposed application in front of you also proposed 7.1 feet. The variances that we're requesting as part of this application are three sign variances. Three sign variances include the maximum number of freestanding or monument signs. One is permitted, and we're proposing two for this application. And then the other two are consistent with what was requested on 3 Campus. The building sign, building-mounted signs, where none are permitted and two are proposed. And then again, one of those building-mounted signs are proposed to be a projection sign, which has, sticks out of the building, three feet, seven inches, where 18 inches is permitted. So now that I've gone through the zoning, I just kind of want to.
Mr. Chairman, do you have illustrations of the signage, or is that the architect?
The architect will provide that.
Okay.
Now that I've gone through the zoning, I just kind of want to touch on some of the, you know, detailed or specific site plan changes that really did not sufficiently change the project. It's why I'm calling it detail, because they're kind of really nitpicky items. So for 3 Campus, the building footprint changed slightly based on the architectural site plan, or the architectural building layout. Setback distances were updated based on revised building footprint and remaining compliance with the zoning variances. The building height, there were minor adjustments, but we're still under the allowable. So in, for 3 Campus, four stories of 50 feet is permitted. And the original application had 36, I'm sorry, 46 feet, two inches for the principal building. And we're now proposing 46 feet, nine inches for the principal building. And for the accessory structure, it was 36 feet, three inches, and we're now proposing 34 feet, eight inches. So you can see we're still in compliance, and it's right around where the heights were before. The building access, the main entrance, which is located on the northwest portion of the site, was modified slightly, and the associated sidewalk was modified, but still in the same location. The two courtyards for 3 Campus were revised, and the landscape architect will provide further testimony on that in a little bit. And the walkways to the courtyards were revised slightly. The parking, we already talked about. And the loading area, which is located in this area right here, was modified a little bit. We tried to regrade it, tried to remove some of the steep areas. And how that's functioning is, is that's really the loading and unloading area for people moving into the project. Also, for trash delivery, I'm sorry, trash pickup, where the trash is collected interior to the building, that will be pulled out to the hardscape area, where a truck will come a couple of times a week and pick up the trash. We talked a little bit about the signs, which I'll talk about the variance in a little bit. And the, again, in terms of the site itself, the site is significantly consistent with what it was before, with some minor associated grading revisions, based on changes made to the courtyard, the main entrance, the loading area. And then again, minor revisions to the utilities. Transformer pads were added, gas meter walls were added, updated water connections based off of where the utility rooms were, sanitary, same thing, and minor storm sewer layout revisions based on the adjustments that were made. Okay, so that was 3 Campus. And as I go through 2 Campus, you'll notice a lot of that is, there's a lot of consistencies with, with the changes. So again, building footprint changed slightly. Setback distances were all updated on the site plan and all remaining performance, other than what I spoke to before with the variance that were previously granted. Building height has changed slightly. Where it was three stories, 35 feet, it's now three stories, 33.1 feet, where we're 60 feet from the westwardly property line. There was four stories, 46.7 feet in the rest of the site. And now we're at four stories, 46.1 feet for the remainder of the property. The main entrance for 2 Campus was initially located on the southwestwardly portion of the building, on the south portion, on the southerly wall of the building, right at that corner. And that has been relocated to the westwardly wall of that building. And that's all. And with that, one of the comments in one of professional letters was the removal of the loading area. And the reason why we did that was because of the fact that all loading is going to occur in the back. All of the postal deliveries, the FedEx deliveries, any deliveries will be, will occur in the back, but we know deliveries to that front entrance any longer. This is, you know, Avalon Bay operations. This was consulting the operations group, and this is what was recommended. And as Mr. Liddell had indicated, they know how this works. They have, I think he said, 300 buildings, and this is the way it works. So this is the reason why this was proposed in this manner. Signage, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. The courtyards were revised, and we'll get more testimony on that from the landscape architect. Parking, we spoke earlier about. And then there were minor grading revisions to the courtyard, the main entrance, and the utility areas, the loading area, and the loading area in the back, based on the changes that were made to the building. And then again, utility and drainage revisions are based on building updates. Transformer pads were added, gas meter walls were added, fire hydrant locations were adjusted based off of changes to, minor changes to the parking. And minor sanitary, the pump location design was relocated based on the building design. The water connection were changed based on the building design updates. And again, minor storm sewer layouts, adjustments were made. So that is what I have. I'm going to go into the variance testimony.
Well, why don't we hold the variance testimony until after the architect shows the illustrations and the board can see that before doing that. Mr. Chairman, there are, I think, as you're aware, some professional reports.
Yes.
I leave it to you as to whether you'd like us to go through that with respect to the engineer and then.
Absolutely.
Take questions.
I want all the engineering packaged into one package, and we can ask questions about the engineering.
As we figure. So we have, first report that I have out is the ARH report dated August 7th for 3 Campus. We'll have that.
So I just went through the first comment. It was related to.
Hold on. The first, so the first comment appears to be on page four, although I defer to this winter.
I think we really started on comments on page six.
Okay, so page six. And this is where planning comments. First one was that the applicant is asked to provide testimony regarding the changes from the previous approval. You've done that, correct?
Yes, I have.
Any changes that you did not testify to in the previous approval?
No.
Comment two was testimony with regard to the pedestrian crossing areas.
So this application does not include any shared parking for 3 Campus on the neighboring Lot 3.8. And that's, really, the reasoning for it is, it's not required. And that's the really, the reasoning for it is it's not required for this application.
And comment number three is the applicant asked to provide testimony regarding garbage and recycling pickup.
So we spoke to a little bit about that where we have the loading area. The trash will be brought out to the hardscape area for pickup a couple of times.
And there was testimony asked with regard to the sign and the illumination of the signs. Is there any additional testimony that you want to provide in every-
We can have the architect speak about the signs.
Okay. I defer to you if you have any other questions.
Yes, I have a question about the freestanding signs. On three campus, there's going to be one or two freestanding signs?
Two, two freestanding signs.
Okay, so an additional variance is needed for that. I don't think it was mentioned unless that was part of the previous approvals.
Yeah, I thought it was part of the previous approval, agreed the previous approval granted for two signs.
Okay. That's it on three.
Okay. Next, we have the, the G P I report dated July twentieth, twenty twenty-three on three campus. And I'm on page. Where it says engineering, I believe it's third page where it says engineering comments slash recommendations. Is that correct, Mr. Canjiano?
Yeah, page three.
Yeah, so that says, uh, site plans general. First was the applicant should provide testimony itemizing the changes to the plans compared to the initial approval. Think you've done that, Mr. Canjiano?
Yes.
The applicant provides testimony supporting the variances granted in the approval, which we'll do in your planning testimony, correct?
I already went through those variances that were proved as part of the original approval.
Yep. Three was the number of proposed parking, garage parking spaces should be verified. Think you did that, correct?
We'll, we'll revise the plans. There's a hundred and ninety-four parking spaces in the garage. So we'll revise that to be consistent with the architecture.
Okay. Four, plans should clearly indicate the location of the E V stations or the parking spaces.
Since there's sixty-nine E V S E parking spaces proposed and they're all proposed within the, the pre-cas garage. That's shown on the pre-cas structural plans for garage.
How many of those are E V to be installed and operating initially? How many are make ready? I mean, does it comply with the requirement for the one-third initial?
We will comply with the law in terms of the one-third, yeah.
All right. So I had on one and three and then you want to go through two and four of two campuses?
Well, you, you had five, yeah. The applicant should provide testimony and acknowledge that the initial approval representations and conditions are still in effect in this application, yes. So that is G P I staying with three campus. May, we have the July thirteen letter from the Pacific River Water Department. Chairman, can you address those?
We'll meet those requirements.
So we'll meet the requirements as a condition of approval in that correspondence. Takes care of three campus. With respect to two campus, we have the A R H letter of August seventh, two thousand twenty-three. And the comments, I believe again on-
Page six again.
Page six?
Yep.
Page six, planning comments again, that the applicant has asked to provide testimony regarding the changes from the previous approval. I believe you've done that, correct?
Yes.
Two is there is parking in front of the access to the trash room, including the handicap space. And it was testimony required in connection with garbage and recycling pickup in that regard. Think you've done that, correct?
Uh, yes, I have. And just to add to that, the, there's a hardscape area just outside of the loading area where the trash will be brought out and staged for pickup. It's not in the A D A route at all. So the A D's parcels can remain there and the A D area remains clear.
So it's, it's being brought out of the building and then-
Correct.
Truck will come to it.
Correct, but it's not, it's not within A D A route.
So the truck isn't accessing the building itself?
Correct.
All right.
And then the third comment was again, provide testimony regarding the illumination of the signs. If it's done or will be done by the architect. Any other?
And just to follow up again on the freestanding signs, I didn't see them both on the plan. Are they, they're going to be at both entrances?
Correct, yeah. And that, there, that is, you know, there was no variance granted for that in the initial application. So we will need a variance for that in this application for two or one.
Okay. And you'll need this required setback for those.
Yes.
That's it for me.
Okay, any questions of the members of the board on the engineering testimony at this time, Mr. Mathew?
Well, we're still, we're still-
You'll turn Mr. Canjiano on this report.
We're still, we have one report left.
Oh, oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm jumping.
We have, uh, so we have G P I's letter dated in July twentieth regarding two campus. And-
Sheet three again.
We have sheet three, engineering comments and recommendations. Mr. Canjiano, you want to?
Yeah, just really, it comes down to number two and number three. Number two, thank you for your testimony on deliveries. Makes perfect sense. Could you give me some, give us, give the board, like food deliveries? We, I remember the prior application, they were coming into the front of the building as well as like ride share and Uber.
That would be done in the back also. I mean, that's where the mailroom is and that's where all that would be.
So ride share will come to the rear of the building?
Yes.
And as well as a food delivery?
Yes.
Okay. So what's happening in the front entrance?
Just to be an entrance for residents.
So no Uber? Because I would suggest that you would have a, at least you, you're old, you have more than the required parking to sign one of those spaces as a sign for. Maybe not deliveries that would come to the back, but Uber, would a resident be coming out to the front? It's an operational question.
We, we can do that. We can do that. We'll, we'll agree as a condition of assigning a space for Uber. And we'll work with you, Mr. Canjiano, in terms of where that space should be.
Great, perfect. And then the other one was on the E V charging. I noticed you don't have any E V spaces called out or any comments on it on this two campus. This is a new application. As I see, it would be required to have the E V.
Yeah, so Mr. Canjiano, it's interesting, that, that raised kind of a question. What turned in, I discussed it this afternoon. And if we could have just eliminated the one space and not changed anything else, I think there was a, a pretty good argument. You know, that, that this does not, this amended application does not affect parking in any way. But there are changes being made with regard to the parking lot, even though we're not changing the number of spaces. In the Ford's attorney's view, and I'm not going to dispute it, is that that does trigger the requirement to comply with, with E V. We will obviously do that, but we will, we'd also like to take the credit for the reduction of the spaces. And we would work with you in terms of determining, you know, where that is on the site.
I'm glad you had this discussion with counsel because after I was going to defend-
I had a feeling, I, you know. I had a feeling. So we'll, we'll do the stations, we'll take the credit. And as a condition of approval, if the board is willing, we will defer to, to you and your judgment, working with you reasonably to determine where that credit should be realized on the site.
I have no issue with that. I just should have had a question for the prior witness from an operational standpoint. As the law allows, you can't take the reduction for the E V parking spaces. Operationally, for the record, is there, do you have enough parking spaces once you take the reduction for both two campus and, and three campus?
Yes, no problem. For both two campus and three campus.
That's all I had. Thank you.
I'd actually like to ask a question of the engineer and our engineer. Is I've been, I've been hearing about some changes made in the technology used for creating E V stations. That there are some places now that are going to almost a regular outlet at every or many spaces. And that there's a computer control that they think they call it load shedding. So that literally you can have just almost a standard outlet at many of the parking spaces rather than a dedicated E V oriented. I, I'm, I'm just trying to, because I-
I'm not familiar with it, but-
As I understand that the, actually the Newark, New York Airport has, has a space that's like that. And I, and I'm trying not to lock anybody into what will quickly become a legacy technology if, if what I have heard is correct.
I'm not familiar with it, so.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that we're-
And then we have, we have the code that we got to follow as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I just, I just wanted their, their thoughts on if they had, if you guys had heard anything about this.
Again, I hear every day changes are being made. There's updates and I know technology is advancing so quickly. So I would anticipate that as this is developed, the best technology that could be used here would be-
Okay, you know, it just-
Especially in terms of the residents, they don't want to provide the residents.
Yes. Well, the discussion of, of the Newark Airport parking in turn, new terminal A is that people can't come back and move their car. So they're going to be plugged into twenty-four, seven for the time that, that they're there, if it's for a whole week. So you have a smart system that sheds the load when the car is full. And you, and you don't have an expensive outlet. You have a standard outlet. No, no, no more powerful than a, than a dryer would have, say. So that, you know, it's all smart controlled and stuff like that. Now maybe what I'm hearing is some engineers' dream of what's coming. But I had read this about the Newark Airport E V station so that you have a whole, whole section that is just regular outlets and people just go, they just plug, plug it in and they leave. So they don't have to come back and move the car and move the outlet around. So I, I don't want to put ourselves in a position where you guys are stuck in a, a technology that's going to be passed. But again, we have to stick with the, with what the law tells us we have to do. So just looking for comments on that.
Like I said, I think that Avalon Bay would do what's, what's, what's in the best interest of that residence. So as, you know, technology advances, I'm sure they'll follow.
Okay. Gordon? So two campus drive. Part of the parking, as I understand it, is shared with four campus?
Correct.
And to connect the two, you have two staircases?
Correct.
Just a silly question, why'd you put handicap ramps on the staircases?
Why did we not?
No, why did you?
Just to provide access.
Okay.
The A D parking spaces are composed on the surface.
No, I just noticed it was weird to see stairs that have handicap ramps on either end of them. That's, that was the question.
Just for access.
Uh, yeah, okay. So, and next question really has to do with both projects. And I, I realized that this wasn't part of the previous approval. I worked at seven campus drive for about eight years, right next to three campus drive. And I think Mr. Canjiano, for a few of those years, was across the street at six campus drive. People walk on campus drive all the time and like lunchtimes or whatever, and there's transit service on it. I don't see any sidewalks proposed on campus drive frontage. And I recognize they probably weren't in the previous approval. Any comments or thoughts on that?
I mean, I, there are, there are no sidewalks proposed. And, and looking at, we, we looked at this yesterday, looking at the roadway either side. There's a lot in a way to propose sidewalks. There's just choices. This is the white balls. So it would be a lot to, you know, have to remove those streets and put sidewalks in and/or, you know, acquire property to put it in if you had to go further away from, from the right away. So at this point, the sidewalks are proposed to connect the two buildings.
Okay, but do you have access to the street from, for transit people to each, to each of these buildings? I thought I saw on at least three campus you did. You have that long route along the interior roadway, correct?
We, we do, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Napolitano, you had your? No? Mr. Van Aken?
Sure, I just have a, three simple questions. First one, would you mind pointing out on each of the maps where the mailroom is? Just so that we can have benefit of not opening up these very large packets of paper.
The mailroom on two campus would be located in the back by the loading area.
Okay.
And would be located- The mailroom is located in the northwest tip of the building.
Okay. Second question is, oh, the whole area is, is accessible for our fire trucks? No issues there?
No issues.
Okay, and then-
The plan said there's a fire truck circulation plant.
Okay, and the third question might be deferred to your landscape architect. But is there free movement with sidewalks around each of the buildings?
Yes.
Okay. So pedestrians could very realistically walk around the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Even by the lake? That was a problem in the last.
Well, right here, there's access to the garage.
Okay.
But not along here, there's-
As long as there's a walking path marked in the garage.
So on a day like today, they'd get a break from the rain. Got it?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, one more question came to mind. For any children that have to get, grab the school bus, where will that take place?
Most likely at the intersection of, of campus drive. What is to make, we have sidewalk here and then sidewalk leads up to there.
Okay.
And you said most likely because that termination is really made by the school board, correct?
Correct.
We, we don't have that power.
As long as they don't come onto your property, I guess, right?
Yes.
All right.
Other members of the, Mr. DePeach?
Yeah, quick question. I think I know the answers, but just for the record. So there is no change to the A D A or handicap parking?
No.
Right?
B D A requirements.
Okay, and-
We, we, we've shifted some stalls around most of the B D A requirements.
Okay. And then the sidewalks we talked about just now, they are all handicap accessible?
Yes.
Through the ramp or whatever.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Mealy?
There's a letter from the fire protection official from the township stating that the fire protection, for the fire department connection is required to be on the front of the building with the plans call for it to be at the rear. Have you resolved that or is that an issue?
When was that letter dated?
He suggests, by the way, that you either relocate it or add a second connection to the front of the building.
When was that letter, letter dated?
I have it here. The date? May third, twenty twenty-four. From Mr. Fletcher.
Mr. Mealy, I don't recall seeing that letter, but I would interested to be able to inform you with the fire department.
Yes, please do.
At the end of the month.
Thank you.
Any other questions by members of the board or professionals?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. I ran the numbers on the E V for two campus. If you can coordinate because it might affect your parking analysis because you indicated there were going to be some shared parking with four campus. Is that-
For two campus, yes.
Okay, so I have three hundred, three hundred and fourteen required with the E V that requires forty-seven point one spaces.
For two campus, correct?
For two campus, correct. You get the credit for two to one, that's twenty-three point five five. That brings your requirement down to two hundred and ninety required, which would leave you with a lot less shared parking spaces. If that's the case, I would you put that testimony on, but it may be during your planning testimony. If you can confirm those numbers and then that would directly affect your parking analysis at the end.
Sure.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who have any questions of this witness on the engineering testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none, before we make, take the next step, is there anybody on this planning board who would like a break?
Yes.
Should move.
We're taking a five-minute recess. We're taking a five-minute recess.
You're lucky Tom's here, because I always forget.
I've had some marathon sessions. You remember Sue Mitchell?
That's Jack's, that's why-
Michael, you remember Sue Mitchell?
Yeah.
She was the chairman of the Board of Adjustments when I first came on it. And we had several nights, Wednesday nights, that went to 1:00 AM.
Wow.
And yeah, there was one break in there because a couple of the guys got up and said, you know, you don't want to clean up the mess.
Yeah, I, I think the only-
Dave Stivers would not-
That's when you moved to amend the fire laws, you know?
Well, that, that's kind of what we did at the start of the project, is we started saying, well, you know, testimony, I guess you gotta start this.
Because you get packets and fix them.
Yeah, exactly.
It doesn't always make sense.
Yeah.
Get through the cases, frankly.
Because we don't get these in the mail. Our first chances to review them is either, you know, by doing it that way, you're basically guaranteeing, especially if you have every, every schedule.
Your mailing is less expensive.
But you always really use damn Dropbox, okay? We do scan in the Dropbox, that's all.
Yeah, digital.
Give us, give it to us.
At the very least.
Give us PDFs.
Yeah, sure.
I, I, it's hard for me to look and try to review them, trying to ascertain what's going on.
I've been proposing that they could just take office and, and also retain them as a record of history. Or perhaps it has to be. Hot mic, hot mic, I can hear you say-
They're ready.
Yeah, these every two weeks.
Yeah, they could be ready.
Dennis says it's every anytime. Yeah, it's real expensive to fix for a house. Take you to someone who's a board engineer for nine years, how many sets of plans you probably love in your house.
They used to get mailed lots of them.
But the reality is, right, a lot of times they do electronic submissions. So you just go up on the website, the town, the applications.
That was the best thing about COVID, but I have to say, this is still the norm, is the paper and you just get a pile of them. I did Washington, they get announced my house or-
Uh, we got suspended, had lightning.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was like six, six, they're gonna come back, kind of like a random Wednesday night class. But it was competitive, but they, the clock just kept on because they started so late. It was late. I saw it there.
I know. I know. My, my peers are all professionals, going to care about it. I'm established in the final plans, final field.
Sometimes it's kind of quality, the plan is better than half paper. Like a photo of a site plan, you know, from other towns.
No, they played well. No, you need the extra.
Like, what is this?
Most of the time I sent them in, I tried to be PDFs, everything.
Nora, would you call the role, please?
Yes, here. Here.
Uh, Di Piero.
Here.
Mealy?
Here.
Matt?
Presence.
Napolitano?
Here.
Jaw?
Yeah.
Von Aiken?
Here.
Dinsmore?
Here. All right, we have our professionals as well. So we are reconvening and Mr. Inglisino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now call our architect, Luz Delmar Rosado, who's the project architect. Raise your hand if you're for him.
You swear an affirmative testimony you're about to give would be the truth of the whole truth, nothing but the truth of how you got it. Name and address for the record, please.
Luz Delmar Rosado, 8521 this per pipe, suite 700, Vienna, Virginia, 22182.
Can you please spell your last name?
R O S A D Y.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Rosado, can you describe for the board your educational, professional background and inform them of any licenses that you hold?
Sure, I have a master's degree in architecture from Virginia Tech, 2000. I'm a registered architect in various states, including DC, Virginia, Maryland, West Virginia, New York, Connecticut, and New Jersey. I've been practicing architecture since 1998 and am a current apprentice since 10 years, about 10 years, almost 10 years.
And you're firm did the original architecture on this project, correct?
Correct. Could you put the microphone closer, please?
Yeah, they get, just be closer to the microphone. Have you testified before any boards in New Jersey?
I have, I've testified in Istanbul and Paddy Seastorm.
And you're accepted as an expert in architecture in those places?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The board have any questions on the background of this expert? All right.
Okay, so, Mr. Rosario, can you please describe the architectural aspects of the, of the changes to the plan and was being proposed tonight?
So I'm gonna speak of the building layout and the organization of the building because the other, other items have already been discussed. The building layout, the exhibit here on the right is Three Campus, A2, this is directly from the site plan, the amendment submission that we, that we submitted.
So both of these sheets were in our package?
Correct. So the building layout for, I'll start with Three Campus, is generally the same as what was approved. We still have a residential building, it still has 238 units. We still have our front door facing Campus Drive, which opens into an amenity area that has visibility to the courtyard. And the units are distributed along the building. And we still have the parking garage in the same location towards the rear of the building. The difference to note, how we improved the plan, number one is we added an ancillary space to separate trash and loading from the residential areas. And that is happening below the building in this area. This ancillary space for trash collection is accessed through a set of elevators located in this location and it also is accessed from the exterior. At the time of collection of trash, it can be carted out into the loading area. This space is also accessed through the parking garage. So the goal is again to separate the use from the residential area. The second notable revision that we've done, we discussed, you guys heard about the EV parking spaces, what that caused was a reduction of the parking garage, the amassing of the parking garage. It got reduced by approximately half a story lower and a total of 39 spaces in the parking garage. And, but other than those two, those two major revisions in the plan, the rest remain the same or has already been discussed. This is for Three Campus. On my left here, I have the drawing for Two Campus and the page is A2 and is as submitted. On Two Campus, again, generally the organization of the building and the uses are the same. We already talked about the total units, that it's the same as the approval. The most notable revision to the architecture in plan is that the entry to the building for the residence entry, which used to face the east, we relocated into the south. And that is to have a better exposure as you come in and have visible, visibility, connectivity to the exterior courtyard and amenities. The amenities remain as per approval, the same as the distribution of the units along the floor plan. The second organizational revision that we did on the plan was relocate the loading access, utility access, and the mailroom component on this corner of the building. In the previous application, this was facing the side of the building here on the west and now we are oriented towards the north, just a minor shift. We simplified the access to the loading by having direct access to the elevator. In the previous application, you had to cross a corridor into the, into the elevator to access the floors above, so that just makes a better circulation for loading purposes. And the mailroom here next, next to this area, which was already discussed by the previous testimony. That's really the main organization difference, still four stories, still have, matching very similar to the approved plan. Now I will show you the architecture of the exterior.
Were these as submitted or are these?
These are as submitted. On the right-hand side, we have page 805 for Three Campus elevations and on the left it's 808 for Two Campus building elevations. In the, in the approved plans, the architecture character for both, for both buildings were similar. They, they shared the same architectural character. We continued that language into this application. So, so we, we maintained the same design strategy, we didn't make any change to that. In terms of building materials, the same. We use the same building materials, we still have two tones of bricks, which is, was in the previous application, a variety of fiber cement panels, siding materials in tons of grades that mimics the approved application. The things that we did different, revisions to notice are, number one, we added wood color fiber cement materials to add accent into the building. And you can see that by the areas in orange in the elevation. The top drawing here is the front of the building facing Campus Drive. The second minor revision that we did is, we, in the, in the approved plans, we have two styles of windows, one with mutants and one without mutants, just to have different architectural character. We still have that, but now instead of one continuous colors for the window, we have two different tones of colors for the windows, to add some detail. And then the third, the third thing that we did was we simplified the railings. The previous application had a wire mesh railing, railing, now we are doing a picket type of railing in the same color, same color of black. So that it's, and that same technique applies for two, for Three Campus and Two Campus. Now that, what I spoke of is for the residential portion of the building. I will speak of the garage of Three Campus now. The garage of Three Campus, let's show it from here, as, as has been described, was reduced in height half a story. So that's notable in the elevation, just the height of the building. The second thing that we did is we adjusted the color to be, it's in this location. We adjusted the color to be a light gray with a dark gray base. In the approved application, it was all one beige color. And we simplified the railing of the garage. Now we have parap, uh, precast as far of the parking garage construction versus a metal rail. And at the corner, we also simplified the corner area of the garage. But generally, it's the same architectural details of both buildings that matched what was approved. This is the front of the building of Three Campus. As you can see, the blade sign described in the previous testimony, located here at the, close to the entrance, at the edge of the building, as well as a canopy sign over the main entry. This is on Three Campus. And then on Two Campus is a similar design. Here is the entry to the building with the, with the canopy sign and the blade sign on the side. On the right side, I have page 803, I'm sorry, 808 for Three Campus, this as submitted, it's the sig, the signature exhibit, which shows the zooming version of that corner that I just described. The blade sign, it's about three feet, three inches in width and 21 feet in height and is located at the edge of the building here. As you come in, you can see it. And then the canopy height, it's about more or less foot, eight inches plus five inches, it's raised five inches and then about 17 feet, eight inches wide. And both buildings have the same signature detail and design. And finally, these are two new exhibits, this was not part of the application.
What the mark, what the mark we use?
The Three Campus, and that's a finished rendering of the exterior elevation.
Correct. And on the left is also a new exhibit, it was not part of the application for Two Campus.
So that'll be A5? And I guess that would be the Two Campus finished rendering?
Yes, exterior elevation.
And so the first exhibit for Three Campus finished rendering, it's a view, as you can see here, the key plan, a view showing the amenity area of the building through the courtyard. You can see the transparency, the use of materials, again, it's very similar to the approved application, but this gives you a sense of what the building will look like. And also you can see the sign on the building on the upper left side. And then on the Two Campus, this is a view, if you see the key plan here on the bottom right side, as you come in, building has three legs, here is the entry to the building with the canopy sign. Here is the entry to the building with the canopy sign. It's featuring the step-back of building on the upper levels, which is also part of the original application and part of the zoning ordinance. You can see the highlights, the materials that we have, and how we incorporated the wood details and the connectivity to the outdoor amenity areas. And that's the finish of my testimony. Any questions that you may have?
Any questions by members of the board on Mr.?
Just out of curiosity, are these the like standard Avalon colors for all the buildings? Or is every building different colors? What's that? Okay.
Didn't quite hear that.
So yeah, I think we can make a representation that these are not standard colors for Avalon buildings.
Thanks.
Okay. The questions down here? Mr. Panaka?
Sure. So could you go into a little bit more about the variances being requested for the signs, as well as the material of the sign?
The variance is for building sign, which is not permitted, and that along the production of the plate, which is equal to three feet, three inches, and the size of the sign. The materials are painted aluminum sign panel with a light coat. That's the place sign and the...
It's not illuminated.
It is most likely internal illuminated, but...
It is illuminated.
And the sign for the canopy, it's just freestanding letters, and will have some illumination, most likely pointing down, because we are aware, we want to make sure there's no impact to residential units. But also, I believe these are aluminum letter cutouts. But also, the variance is for the signature, which is not, it's not...
Yeah. And in addition to that, you have two monument signs at each location, right?
Yes, the monument sign will be on the testimony on the landscape architect.
Okay, okay. What's the reason for, I mean, this is 63-plus square foot sign being placed on the building. What's the reason for that?
I believe this is the part of the branding of Avalon.
Okay. Better handled by you, sir? Okay.
Part of the branding by Avalon was provided to us in order to identify this building.
And this type of signage is on most of their buildings?
In a lot of their buildings, they use this signage.
Yeah, just candidly, it's not my favorite thing about the project. All the other things seem great, but I'm not understanding why we need to have this type of signage, so.
Any other questions by members of the board on the architect's testimony? Any members of the public who have any questions on the architect's testimony?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
For the blade sign, the location of it, does it interfere with any of the residents' sightlines, sunlight into their units?
No, it doesn't.
Thank you.
Okay. Any of our professionals have any questions on the architect's testimony hearing and seeing? Okay, counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. This time I'd like to call Tom Carman, who is our project landscape architect, and he's at Millow Bower Carman.
Your name, do you swear a firm testimony about to give me the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God? I do. Name and address for the record, please, by your last name.
My name is Thomas S. Carman, C-A-R-M-A-N, and the address is 200 Union Avenue, New Jersey.
So, Mr. Carman, could you please provide the board with your educational background, your professional experience, and any licenses that you possess?
Sure. So I have a degree in landscape architecture from Rutgers University. I've been a licensed landscape architect since 1997, and I have appeared before a number of boards. I've actually had the pleasure of appearing before this board on this original application.
Mr. Chairman, any members of the board have any questions on this background, on this exhibit?
Well, yours. So, Mr. Carman, can you please explain the landscape architectural changes that are being proposed?
I can, and I will, I have a couple of exhibits for this.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to review the landscape improvements for both two and three campus, the lighting, the site lighting, as well as the recreational amenities. Now, these four plans that I'll be presenting tonight are new exhibits, so we can, if I can mark those. I will do three campus, the rendered landscape plan first. And then I will mark rendered landscape plan for two campus as A7. So when I'm reviewing the planting as well as the site lighting, I'm going to talk about it just for both of them. Essentially, the planting revisions that were made are very minor. What we did was, you heard from the architect about some minor adjustments to the architecture, you heard from the civil engineer for some minor adjustments, so we did the same. The planting design followed suit. If an entrance to the building was modified or a window shifted over, we would modify the planting accordingly. Additionally, we modified the planting within the courtyards themselves, and after this, I will show you an enlargement plan of the courtyard and talk to you about some of those amenity spaces that have changed. But some simple modifications to the planting are what were proposed. The one thing that, after the plans were submitted back in March, we've been working with Avalon Bay's lead consultant and their sustainability consultant. So we've actually made some other very minor adjustments that are not currently shown on the submitted plans. I mentioned that we made some additional tweaks, because it's a real positive, right? This is an idea to conserve additional water, reduce and maintain turf and such, so we're making some of those adjustments as well. Again, very minor, yet very positive. The monument signs that have been discussed, there's one at the corner of, on three campus, at the corner of Campus Drive and the Internal Service Road, and then additionally, one all the way down towards the bottom on the southern end. Both of those signs would be illuminated with a light shining up at the sun. On two campus, two signs, monument signs located at the entry points off of Campus Drive. Again, those signs are very much in keeping with the original approval. Just the materials would change a bit to complement the architectural materials. What I'll do now is I'll move to the recreational amenities within the exterior. So on three campus, I will mark this as A8. This is a rendered plan of the courtyard. And for two campus, we'll mark that as A9. We have done a number of communities for Avalon Bay in New Jersey, and as Mr. Liddell had indicated, they've got a wealth of experience, knowledge, when it comes to providing recreational amenities for the residents. And so we've taken that direction, and we've applied it to these four courtyards, two courtyards at three campus and two courtyards at two campus. Many of the original components, like barbecue grills, outdoor lounge furniture, fire pits, general seating areas for gathering, all those kind of elements still remain. At three campus itself, the play area still remains, same exact kind of size as what was previously proposed. We have modified the pool a bit within this courtyard. We still provide some cabana spaces adjacent to the pool. And directly off of the interior fitness on three campus, we've added now an exterior fitness space, shown in this gray tone right here. So residents have the ability on a beautiful day to go outside. There's some equipment outside as well. Moving on the left-hand side of the image where the interior amenity space is, we've also done shade structure, that's kind of like a co-working, an outdoor workstation. So any resident who's maybe doing a work-from-home kind of day has the ability to go out there as well, where there would be a plug to plug in their laptop and some furniture to facilitate that. This three campus also originally had a bocce court. That's one of the items that we have eliminated, but I would like to say that we've added a dog run. The previous application did not have a dog run, and it was something that we spoke with the board about, how residents would walk, and the board actually had requested that we put like pet waste bags out along there. So now we have a dog run, which I think is a very positive amenity to be added. Two campus, two campus also had a bocce court originally, as well as a pool. There was a secondary pool at this community. So we've eliminated the pool, and we've eliminated the bocce court from two campus. But we've provided, again, some of these outdoor workstations for residents to use, expanded the patio terrace space, providing greater seating opportunities, barbecue, gathering areas, and then we've also incorporated a dog run on two campus as well. So that provides an overview, all the amenity revisions, very positive. And the last thing I'd like to just touch on is the site lighting. Site lighting for both two and three campus, we originally had two different types of fixtures. One was a more decorative, like a bit of a more contemporary lantern-style fixture, more architectural in nature. The other one was a bit more utilitarian. And utilitarian fixture remains in the same locations as previous, parking garage, as well as along some of the perimeter of the parking. But the decorative architectural fixture that is proposed along the fronts of the building, all along the building itself, the parking lot facing the campus drive, that fixture, we've just adjusted the style of it. Originally, it was a round fixture. This is a square fixture, just architecturally works much better with the architecture. Similarly, the courtyard space primarily lit with bollard lights, and we did the same thing. We just switched that fixture a bit, moved them a bit certainly to coordinate with the revised courtyard, but very handsome fixture and will work really well. That provides the overview of landscape and lighting.
Thank you. Chairman? Any questions by members of the board on the landscaping? Mr. Napolitan?
Thank you. Nice renderings, by the way. Wow. The play area is cut off from the pool. Is that correct? You can't get the play area to the pool.
Right. It's totally different wing of the building.
Just to make sure. Thank you.
Questions for the landscaper? All right, I do have one. Is there any, gonna be any barrier between the lake or the pond and the building? Any sort of fence, something so that small children running around the place don't go saying, whoa, a lake?
Right. Along the, on the garage side, I know that there's a retaining wall there, so there's certainly a fence along that. I will have to ask our civil engineer if there is in fact a fence around the rest I don't believe there is a fence around the rest of the existing perimeter. There is along the retaining wall at the upper edge.
All right, so what you're saying is that there is a barrier. I mean, obviously, the pond is actually not on your property, so putting a fence around it is not something you would be required to do. But I'm just trying to think in terms of families living there, that...
Right. The pond is though on our property.
Is it?
It is. Yeah, it is.
Okay.
But just to further that point, maybe some kind of fence that separates the courtyard from the parking lot even, would also be considered appropriate for children's area.
Yeah, so there is, for the courtyard perspective, where the kids' play areas, there's grade change there also, the way that the drive, the parking lot itself, the grade, it rolls down. So this area where you would go into the parking garage is lower, it's like a story lower than the courtyard itself. So there's a set of stairs with a gate at the top of that, so children wouldn't be able to just walk down there.
No, I'm just looking at the way that you've structured it, and it doesn't seem like children running and playing are gonna naturally run across the parking lot and jump into the lake.
That's true. That is.
That's why I phrased it as there's some sort of barrier. Doesn't necessarily have to be a fence, but...
Right. So you're correct. There is, there's a planted edge at the edge of the, where the pond is, there's a retaining wall along there that would have a rail, and then there's also parking lot providing some separation.
Any other questions by members of the planning board? For any members of the public who have questions for the, this witness at this time hearing and seeing?
Can I ask one more? That's probably an operations one, but is there a dog size limit to living in this community? I'm just...
Yeah, Avalon Bay has like a breed limit.
So like 20 pounds are cut off? Is that what it is?
I don't know exactly what it is, but there is a breed limitation in size.
I just said it because I think the dog run is quite small, but I'm guessing small, medium dogs. Okay.
Any of our professionals have any questions or comments this time?
I have a couple of questions about the pool. How is that accessed? Can you access it from the yard, individual units? Is there a main entrance to it?
There's a main entrance. There are two gate access ways to come into it. So you would be able to gain access from a... Jumping back to exhibit A8, flanking this cabana structure, there are two gates coming off of the main corridor of the building. One would be able to come out and gain access into the pool area itself, or from where the interior amenity space is over here, people are free to come out that direction and walk, and then go through via a gate as well. There are some private residential patios that go around, but there is a gate, a fence separating, they would have to use the same gate that everybody else utilizes.
Or jump the fence. This may be more of an operational question, because the pool's for both buildings, correct? And based on the amenities you have, you're mostly gonna be coming from two campus to three campus, not the opposite. Parking, is there gonna be designated parking for those visitors from the other building? Or is it just, you know, what's available?
There is not specific designated spaces for somebody from two campus to... There is not specific designated spaces for somebody from Two Campus to come over. It's a shared kind of a scenario.
Okay. And they would have access through the building to get there?
Yes, they would. Yes. So they would be able to come in through the main entrance of the building and leave the pool and go use the restroom within the Three Campus as well.
That's it for me.
All right. Since I've now found that the lake or pond is part of your property, is there any plan for maintaining it so that it doesn't become fouled or algae'd or whatever? Is there an agitator, an oxygenator, or is it just going to be as necessary? Now, people are pointing to the back.
That's an engineering question.
We'll ask the engineer to come up.
Mr. Liddell's coming up in a moment anyway.
Yes, and he can address that during his planning testimony, I guess.
Well, he's going to testify on affordable housing.
Oh, affordable housing. Yes, there we go. All right. We're at 9:45, and as I understand it, our clerk gets very cranky once we get past about 10:15 or 10 o'clock. And you don't want her to get cranky. So I'm just...
We'll be done by 10:15. We'll be done before 10:00. All right. This is... Yeah, we'll be done.
So can you clarify something again? So people who live in Two can go to Three and people who go to Three can live in Two?
They do have that opportunity.
Do we have other plans for like a crosswalk that's going to be built and painted striped in the street there for them to cross over?
There are not plans to do a crosswalk.
Okay. Is that something that should be taken into consideration? That if they're going to be able to go back and forth? I mean, I want to use, I'm here, I want to use the pool. So I mean, you know, I'm, it's going to be, that road's going to get busier and busier. All the whole, this building here, and there's something going to be going a little further down, so maybe something to take into consideration. Probably not our jurisdiction, no problem, right?
The road's actually busy now, I can tell you.
Okay, well, there you go. The road's busy now, so it's going to get busier. Maybe that's something to think about. I didn't realize you could go back and forth.
I think there were no sidewalks though proposed on Campus.
There are not sidewalks proposed on Campus.
Okay, but you have perimeter sidewalks that you've got showing on your properties here, your plans.
We do. We have sidewalks contained within our property.
Actually, do you mind going to the aerial in the back there for a second? I just want to see how well they align.
Which one, back there?
The one you're using for. Thanks, thanks, Tom.
Oh, they're not even close. Yeah, there's a whole lot. I forgot to drive over.
Yeah, they're quite a ways apart.
Yeah, quite a ways apart, yeah.
But there's no parking spots.
What designated parking spots?
All right. Yep.
You get all Four Campuses.
Okay. No other questions?
Well, I usually let you ask this question, but based on the lighting that you've chosen, there won't be any visible element of the bulb itself or the emission of the light. It'll just be secondary light that we'll see.
Right. So these are LED downward focus dark sky compliant fixtures.
Wonderful. No, because I know our...
Well, my usual complaint is driving on 202 and having these hotspots that I can see. I don't like hotspots. I like to have them properly shadow boxed so that they're really facing down. And so when you look at it from a distance, it looks relatively dark, except you're getting light off of the cars and the McAdam and stuff like that.
Yeah, we have good uniformity throughout, so that also does away with the hotspots.
Right.
It's much more consistent.
Okay. All right. Yep. So, Mr. Anglisi, now, as I recall, Mr. Liddell, maybe you want to clean up a few of these questions before going into affordable housing?
If there's something to clean up, sure.
I think three things to clean up. One was the sort of the importance of the blade sign to Avalon Bay. That was a question that was asked.
And I think the answer to all the signs, it wouldn't be either of you or a request anything from you. We didn't think all the sign variances were important to us. Our view is that signage provides, I think the architect answers rambling, but it's just for people from a distance to see where they want to go. There's a wayfinding aspect to it and sometimes to, given all the signs are important. I don't, respectfully, I'm not the planning board, I don't get to go on this, obviously, but at the end of the day, I don't think any of the sign variances or requests impact any neighbors in any fit enough a way. I think you can certainly grant the variances, see fit to do it, without impeding, like a review, if language requires, if the attorney knows it. Now, I think we qualify with regards to it, by having a testimony here. And I just think that in many ways, the signage variances, the signage requests all the time, because a lot of the signage is just aren't up to date. They're just done from an archaic point of view. They were done in a different era a lot of times. And even blade signs weren't even really contemplated back 20, 30 years ago. Relatively new. So that's why I think we asked for these types of signs. It's an updated aspect to it. I think someone said something earlier. 20, 30 years from now, when someone looks at something else, they're covering other ideas with regard to it. I think when you're in a residential, which we're not, in a residential neighborhood around there, there are other considerations. But it's mostly, you know, this is an office park or industrial. It's not in any way, I don't believe, in fact, any residential in any way, we get to that.
All right. And then you're not, are you treating the ponds?
So I whispered to the engineer with regard to it. We are required to comply with all stormwater BEP rules with regard to the pond. We obviously will do that. You're going to put a compliance law provision in the resolution anyway, from having to comply with. Beyond that, we're not considering doing anything further. But having said that, I'll go back to what I said an hour and a half ago. We're going to own this property for decades. I can't let that property get in disrepair. This affects my ability to rent. Now my residents come, feel comfortable there. So that's the incentive we have. And as I said earlier, even if it comes up, not only with the construction of it, but on a maintenance occupation, you're going to call me or you're going to call really the in-house property manager that works for Avalon Bay. That's all to look into, what's going to be used.
Were there any other operational questions, Chairman, that you had? Any other members? I am going to make one comment from my own personal opinion on this. I am a fan of signs that actually identify buildings. I've been in, I'll call them timeshare parks rather than industrial parks, where the local ordinances didn't allow any signage at all. And it's horrible. I really like to have proper signage identifying different buildings. And so I personally don't object to the signs that I saw represented there, but I do think it's worthy of a discussion.
So just a point on those signs, the testimony that was given was that these signs would not impact any of the residential units, whereas on the, on a Four, a Five, a Ten at least, probably more, you can see that clearly the sign is very much adjacent to one of the unit's windows.
Yeah, the question, I'm not going to speak for the architect, the architect back up, was, I'm paraphrasing. Does it impact the ability to view corridor in any way with regards to the unit's type? I thought she testified that it does not.
She did. She testified that it does not, yes.
Yeah. So I'm going to rely on her testimony with regard to it. She believes in each unit location, that the sign is contemplated, does it impact Mr. Jones or Mrs. Smith that live in that unit? And by the way, if it did, and if I really had to come back and modify, we're not trying it to impact a particular unit or a residence that live in a particular unit.
It does seem to me that it's impacting at least two of your residents with a three-foot sign, probably within two or three feet of their window. I think that would be an impact.
So perhaps, I guess, ask my client if we could agree to a condition whereby that would be checked on the final plans to make sure that your folks are satisfied that the views from the residences would not be impacted by the sun.
I think the only really negative from that would be if it's lit at night and you've got a window there.
And if we covered that, it was illuminated.
It's illuminated. I thought.
Right.
Yeah.
So if it's shining into their window, that that would be an impact. Other than that, I can't think of...
Well, you know, I appreciate your view on the matter of being able to see, but I think the monument signs are probably sufficient to know which building it is also. So I don't see these signs as being necessary. But that's my opinion by myself, so other board members are free to disagree with me on that.
Why don't you, I'm not going to speak for the attorney or the board. I'm happy with a condition that describes that in the final construction drawings that are submitted, the advocate is required to consider any impact on any living room window of a unit and mitigate the impact in any way of that sign with regard to view and illumination.
Okay. Is that something that we can address, attorney, and enforce?
I have no problem with that. It's really, at the end of the day, your issue. If the board wants to grant the barrier...
I'm trying to accommodate...
No, I understand. I'm just trying to put into perspective of, you know, if you're concerned about those two units, then it's an illumination issue. Ultimately, so Liddell does not want two of his residents to be impacted negatively by a flashing sign, you know, and will adjust accordingly. It's not good business, I would imagine. Implementing an enforceable condition later on, it would either be to allow the sign or to modify the sign, you know, later on to say, you know, includes determination that it's going to impact or negatively impact. I don't know if that...
I mean, my understanding, the reason for this variance, and you certainly disagree with that, and that's okay, but we don't, we just don't want to promote that kind of, you know, enhanced illumination advertising glitziness.
It's not flashing, though. It's not flashing.
I wouldn't mean to describe it incorrectly, but, you know, we just want to keep things simple.
Of what?
And also without a lot of extra light and things like that. That's why I don't really like this sign. The monument sign sounds great. The sign over your front entrance, that looks great. These two signs, you know, the ones at each building are the ones that I don't agree with.
Well, since we're on the topic of these blade signs, I mean, Christine, am I correct that our ordinance doesn't contemplate blade signs?
No, not really.
The only thing I saw on our...
The projection of 18 inches. So that's really looking at your standard wall-mounted sign and that it not, you know, stick too far.
I mean, I do find it a little analogous to what we allow temporary as a banner sign, a drop-down banner sign, which case, in which case, our ordinance restricts that to 32 square feet maximum. And you're proposing 63, I think, square feet each? I'm just curious about the size.
Feedback, yeah.
I'm just curious about the size and the versus our ordinance and an analysis of that.
And that might be more of a planning testimony question.
It's not me? I think it's me.
Yeah?
Yeah. I always do this to mics. I don't understand.
Yeah, I don't want to do on the fly, just estimate that I could reduce it from 63. That's why I just asked a question about it. I could certainly, I think, respond to your question, your concern. It's, we're incentivized, obviously, not to impact, actually, I believe, the people that live in that unit. We honestly will not do that. I could probably draft with my counsel, your counsel, some provision that's enforceable to do that. And if the board feels that the blade signs is totally acceptable, I think that's what they're saying. Maybe it's size at some level, you can look at that, too. But I'd like to keep it the way it is right now and deal with your issue. Your issue's a little harder to deal with, certainly on the fly, it's hard to deal with.
Understood.
There's nothing in front of me I can say. Yeah, reduce it to this. I don't know what the impact is sitting here on this desk, but that would take a little more time. So I don't want to delay. You're going to get a vote, and you're going to, I want to do this testimony, too, in a second, and see if we can figure that out.
My question would be with the sign, with regard to illumination. You've bought many of these projects, correct? Very similar?
Also.
Okay. Were there any effects of lighting on those other?
No, in fact, this exact question was asked by the Roseland Planning Board less than two weeks ago. The exact same thing, blade sign, and they asked, just like your question, will it impact any units? Different architect at the time. The architect said the same answer. It does not affect any units. It was slightly overhanging, and it was, because the lid is behind me, this is a wheel tool, and said the same thing. It's in the living room, in that particular corner of units. Exactly the same that we had in Roseland.
My point would be that if you know it's affecting other projects that you have, why would you continue to do it?
It was not.
Okay. That's all.
Okay. So, Mr. Liddell, can you describe for the board what you're proposing with regard to affordable housing and how? And by what degree you're going to reduce the number of family rentals, thus the impacts on precipity, while maintaining the same number of credits and providing housing for an underserved segment of the population that needs it?
Sure. So let me just start on a global level, the important things that you should know right enough. You signed a settlement agreement which involves Two and Three Campus with regard to inclusionary component, affordable set aside. The agreement that you have is for 82 credits, and in your particular case today, 82 units. They're divided, I'll tell you the numbers in a second, between Two and Three Campus. Fine. I have the privilege of being at Avalon Bay 20 bucks a year. And the privilege, because pervertly the buck stops with me, I get to make certain decisions on the after the company. And I decided about a year ago that there was something I wanted to do as, sort of on the back nine of leaving the few years of Avalon Bay. And that is to provide housing for an underserved population. It started with my godson. My godson is 28 years old. He's a son of my fraternity brother in college. His name is Matthew. Matthew is a high-level, functioning, autistic, unspectacular. Matthew is in Housing Massachusetts that provides supportive assistance, I'll tell you what that means in a second. And Matthew works three, four hours a day at Mo's Grill. He's a line cook. He can't drive. He just, the feeling is that he won't be able to react quick enough should, God forbid, something happen. He cannot financially support himself. His parents are well enough to support him, and they do that, and they have it in a certain housing, which is in Massachusetts, that provides activities and support and job training and actually education training for people of Matthew's age and challenges that they have, developmentally disabled. Fortunately, New Jersey under the various laws related to affordable housing incentivize, actually, people like me and people like you, I.D. towns, to provide housing like that. Now, you heard I live in Livingston. In Livingston, we have ones around the corner from my home, six group homes. You may know group homes generally have two to three adults. They're supervised typically by United Way or Arch of Estes County, in my case, Arch of Morris County here. Those three adults live in that house, house, and sometimes they're women, sometimes they don't, whatever it might be. But in that house, it's a single-family home. There are no amenities there. There's no social interaction. It's three adults, three bedrooms. Maybe they cook together. I don't really know about it. The state of New Jersey determined many years ago that if I, as a developer, want to provide supportive housing as part of an inclusionary project, you as the town get to count that affordable housing not by unit, but by bedroom. So if I do a three-bedroom supportive housing unit, you get three credits. In normal affordable housing, non-supportive housing, you get one credit, one unit. Here, if I do three bedrooms, you get three. If you do two bedrooms, you get two. So I've decided about a year plus ago that in all of our communities, and you're now the fourth town on the period of five, I've had this conversation, and I've invoked Matthew every single time. And for the record, every time I do this, I send information to that supportive housing in Massachusetts, so it makes me feel better. But we've been able to provide supportive housing. The first one we're doing is in Princeton, where we've delivered units recently. The next one is Roseland. Sound familiar? We're going to move it that way. So when we had the ability to build in precipity, I decided that I'd like to pursue this. The first thing I did was, well, I did the numbers, then I called Fair Share Housing Center. Because I'm not appearing in front of you unless there are the fair shares fall into. So I don't want to cause you any issues. I don't want to mess up any of your settlement agreement, et cetera. And after educating Fair Share, by the way, after the fourth time, they're totally on board with what we want to do. In fact, supportive of it, they recognize that while some towns have group homes, we're providing a different environment in a group home for these adults. And they're supportive of it. They still want me to do family, they call them family rentals, family rentals, and we're doing that. But when I have the ability up to a certain level here, I'll do the numbers in a second, I want to provide supportive housing. So what we did was, we looked at both Two and Three Campus, 82 credits. Now, let's call it credits, not units. So I don't know who's going to write some numbers, but I want to go slow with the numbers and tell people the numbers, and I'm looking at you, as your attorney. Because I know you're going to look at me and ask me to repeat it, and I speak fast to begin with.
They'll be watching the video again and...
Yeah, you'll look at the video. So let me just break them down as we've been doing the whole evening, Two Campus and Three Campus. Two Campus today, as approved, is 35 affordable units. There are seven one-bedroom, 21 two-bedroom, seven three-bedroom. 35 units, 35 credits. What I want to propose is 17 affordable housing units, not 35, and 11 supportive housing units. units. The 17 affordable units will now be one one-bedroom, 12 two-bedrooms, and four three-bedrooms. And then for the 11 supportive housing units, I'm proposing one one-bedroom and 10 three-bedrooms. When you add the new proposal for two campus, instead of 35 credits on two campus, you're now going to get 14 credits, 13 more credits with less, with seven less units. 35 units versus 28 units. And again, I think you all were nodding, so I'm assuming you're following me, because of the supportive housing, it's counted by bedroom, not by units. Now, let me just give you some more numbers to go to 35 and 11. Let's go to three campus, and I'll sum it up. Three campus today is 47 affordable units, 47 credits. Nine one-bedroom, 28 two-bedroom, 10 three-bedroom. Now, remember, in two campus, you now have 13 more credits than you had before today. So I end up with 13 less credits here, so that it'll be 34 units, not 47. And the bedroom distribution is going to change. Two one-bedrooms, 18 two-bedrooms, and 14 three-bedrooms for 34 credits. The prior was 35 plus 47, 82 credits. The proposal is now 48 plus 34, 82 credits. Nothing that I've described impacts your affordable housing settlement. Here's what will change. One, you'll have tremendously less school age children. Just calling it like it is. And by the way, I might as well say it, another hat I wear, I'm the chair of the Rutgers Center for Real Estate. The Rutgers Center for Real Estate, which I know you're probably familiar with, issued a school age children report a few years ago, which was surveying 40,000 apartment homes in New Jersey. School age children is actually a lot less than most people think. But for affordable family rental units, there are a lot of school age children for the two and three-bedroom units, just the ages. So there's a significant difference in number of school age children that will be generated because of less family rental units going down. None of the supportive housing units are going to have kids. They're development-disabled adults. In addition, and fair share, as I said, I want to keep emphasizing, has borne in to that.
So they consented to what you're proposing?
Completely consented to. All the numbers I just described to you were sent to them, actually, months ago, by the way, before we got in front of you. And forgetting about the numbers, forgetting about fair share and the settlement, most important to me, and I hope you agree, we're now, hopefully with your approval, providing housing that doesn't exist for this underserved population that, and I don't know your backgrounds, but I can tell you right now, when we called Ark of Mercer County, who's going to handle the Princeton project, and we said we want to do this, you want to guess the number of adults they told me that are going to line up to fill out, they have to qualify, by the way, to fill out, to sign up for this? It's insurmountable, but we're never going to satisfy the need. We haven't reached out to Ark of Morris County or United. We, we will work with your affordable housing. We do the same things, administrative agent that I pay for, that the town tells me what to use, we work with them to select the provider, they sign a master lease with us for these 11 supportive housing units, and they, I don't get to select the people, they select the people, and we work with them. And we expect this to provide, you know, job opportunities for them, maybe educational opportunities for them. And all the, it's going to be 31 supportive housing residents can use all the, and you, thank you very much for the compliments, by the way, the recreational menus that you saw will now be available to this population. That's a lot different than a group home, you know, around the corner in most towns. So I, I like giving this speech. I feel wonderful that we're able to provide, with your approval, provide this. I think it makes sense. Some developers, in full disclosure, focus on veteran housing, which is another thing you can do under the law. I decided to focus on this population. I hope you agree it's a deserving population for this housing, and I'm making you whole. There's no impact on you whatsoever. So that's what I wanted to describe. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Just so, just so, just to make it simple, so you have 31, you're proposing 31 supportive housing beds?
Correct.
And that would mean 31 fewer family rental affordable housing units?
Yeah.
Yeah. So one question. Okay. So, so it's nice to know that the office was supportive of supportive housing. But let's see, you've, you said they're all going in two campus?
Yeah. We just, we had it divided in a certain way. They're all going in two campuses.
And the pool is in three campus?
The pool's in three campuses here.
So they all have to cross the street?
Well, sort of all the two-campus residents.
Understood.
Yeah.
That, just that, that's one of my questions.
By the way, let me just talk about, because someone else asked about it, the pool's open before I leave. I just, I thought of a pool, et cetera. And what we tried to do was separate the amenities in a way that appeals to certain people. Now, you're right, that in some cases, if you wanted to use the pool, you're going to have to walk across the street to do that. But beyond the supportive housing, we looked on a more holistic basis with regard to it, and it just made sense in laying it out that way. There was nothing intentional about it in any way. It just played in that particular way.
No, I, that's, that's fair. I just, I was, I guess, making a point to support some of the comments we made earlier. Thank you.
Okay. Members of the board have questions of this?
Hi, thank you for that. It's nice to know that that's, that's happening. Appreciate you doing that. Just, I want to make sure I have my numbers right.
Sure.
So we, we still have 82 credits.
Right.
We having it up or down?
Exactly.
Well, we have, if I wrote this right, we have 20 less actual units. We have 82 beds.
20, 34.
All right? So there's still 20, there's actually 20 less units that are affordable housing, but there's still 82 credits, 82 beds.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And I would, you know, we started the whole application saying we have minor changes. I remember John indicating, say no units overall. We were never going to come to you and ask for any relief with regard to it. The deal was made, you signed a settlement agreement, my seller made a deal with you with regard to what's approved. We're just trying to tweak certain things that we think are beneficial, that you asked me in the beginning, what's beneficial about it? This was one of the items I was holding back, said I think...
Fewer results.
Sure.
Now, this is why we had to do the, the changes to designating as an area in need of redevelopment, fundamentally?
Well, facilitated a great project.
I, I understand that. I'm just trying to, so that the board feels more comfortable with the decision they made earlier.
It's a longer reasons.
Okay, yes. Any members down here have any questions? Members of the public have any questions of this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none, counselor?
Uh, yes, let me call back, Mr. Herman, who's our planner. Provide the planning testimony, then we're finished. Mr. Herman, I just ask if you can provide the planning testimony to substantiate the variances that are being requested.
Mixed up all your boards.
The first thing I wanted to just touch on was the EV parking issue for two campuses. So we have a requirement of 314 spaces based on RSIS for the two-campus project. Based on your ordinance, 50% of the required is required to be EV, which equates to 48 parking stalls. So we'll agree to provide 48 EV parking stalls for two campuses. For that, based off of that, we're allowed to take a two-to-one credit for the reduction for the amount of parking, total parking spaces for the site, so, which we could reduce the parking spaces by 24. And speaking with the client, we are suggesting either what was mentioned by the attorney prior, possibly removing some of the shared parking on the neighboring lot to, to the west, or maybe even possibly removing some of the parking along the detention basin and possibly reducing the height of that retaining wall. So I think we would just like the flexibility to work with your engineer to, to determine where we take the credit for the 24 parking stalls.
Anyone object to that? What does our engineer think that works?
I don't have an issue with it. The board is fine with either location. We can work something out.
Just one question, Mr. Herman. So do you have an agreement for a specific number of spots in four campus?
There is an easement on four campus, yes.
But is it for the entire parking lot, or just forced, or very specific spots?
Specifically.
So this basically, if you eliminate this 24, like, I guess, my big question is, like, if you already planned for the 46 spots there, why bother even getting rid of them? Do you really need to take the credit? I mean, this parking is there. It's built. It's, like, it's already existing. It's not like you're building less parking by doing that.
That's why we're asking for that flexibility to look at, you know, that, or maybe, like you said, if we, if we reduce some of the parking along the detention system there, we'd be able to do more grading for that detention system and reduce the height of the wall. That's why we just want that flexibility to work with your engineer.
Okay.
We can classify that as an infield change.
Yep.
Considering that we kind of first discussed this tonight and to credit, to give the flexibility for your engineers to go back and come up with a definitive plan, work with our engineers, we'll classify that in the conditions of approval as a de minimis change and grant our engineer the ability to dictate where the, how that's going to look.
That's fine.
Okay. So we, our team provides some testimony regarding the signs, and I just want to put some planning testimony on the record regarding the signs. So between two and three campuses, we're asking for three different variances. For two campuses, we're requesting the variance for two monument signs where one is, where one is permitted. For two and three campuses, we're requesting variance for two building-mounted signs where none is permitted. And one of those signs is the blade sign that we talked about that is about three and a half feet measured out where 18 inches is permitted by the ordinance. So this is a fit into the C2 variance legislation, and for purpose, this C2 grant allows the board to grant the variance relating to a specific piece of property that for the purposes of, where the purposes of the MLUL, the purposes of the Educational Facilities Construction and Financing Act would be advanced by deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements and the benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detrimental. So in my interpretation, so long as the relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan, zoning ordinance, the board can grant that variance. So C2, as relates to how the MLUL would be advanced by deviation from zoning ordinance, in, in my opinion, the signage, the signage would advance purposes of the MLU, MLUL by promoting the public health, safety morals, and general welfare, by providing signs that can help direct people to the building and, and while they're not wayfinding signs, they kind of act as such. And provide direction for people to expeditiously and safely find their way to the intended destination. And as I listened to the testimony, my thoughts were, you know, the blade sign is when you're two or three blocks away, you're not going to see that monument sign. So that helps to direct you that you want to go to that building, and you can see the monument, the blade sign. As you approach the building, then you can see the monument signs at the two driveway locations. You know, that's where you pull into that building for that, that specific building. And then the last is the canopy sign, where it then directs you, once you're in the parking lot, to where that main entrance is located. So again, these signs are not wayfinding signs, but they, that's what they act as. And the direction provided to people will help to minimize dangerous situations that can occur when people don't know where they're going. You know, you have that person that slows down or stops because they're trying to figure out where the building is. These signs make it visible for that person to, to find that building. So as far as the positive criteria is concerned, as the provisions of the MLUL, the amount of improved slave planning and granting assigned access will promote the purposes of the MSUL through reasons that I had provided. As discussed prior, providing a sign that acts as a wayfinding signs will help people visiting the site to get where they need to go safely, expeditiously, and will help to minimize unsafe actions due to indecisive nature of not knowing where you're going. And for the negative criteria, I see no substantial detriment to the public good. Again, in my opinion, the potential impacts resulting from the variance are essentially limited aesthetic considerations or, you know, sign pollution. And in my opinion, the sign package that our team has put together provides for the minimum signs that acts as wayfinding signs to get people where they want to go. And I just kind of described there, you know, as you kind of get closer to the building, the different sign to provide different ability to see where you're going. And again, no substantial impairment, the intent, purposes of the zone plan, zoning variance, the signage that acts as wayfinding signs will help people visiting the site to get where they need to go safely, expeditiously, will help to minimize unsafe actions due to indecisive nature of not knowing where you're going. So in conclusion, the benefit to the deviation clearly outweigh any detriments, as there are no detriments that I can see. And that's what I have to say.
Any members? Mr. Vonok.
So your, your positive side is that people who live in the building aren't going to know how to get there, or the professional drivers who are delivering product in the building won't know how to get there. Is that what I'm hearing?
It's really more intended for people visiting the site. In other words, I have a friend that's coming to the building, and I say, I'm in Avalon Bay, three campus, and as they approach, they see the larger sign on the side of the building that helps them direct towards the building. They see that the monument signs are thrust into the driveway and then...
Wouldn't that also apply to prospective renters? I mean, it's in the building in which people are going to be...
The testimony was under purpose A was the general public, right? The general welfare.
Okay.
It's not specific to renters, it was the general public or general welfare.
Okay. Because the other part of that is, we discussed that sign ordinances are outdated these days. But yet, we don't seem to account for the fact that everybody uses Google Maps or Apple Maps or all those map programs. So they don't need to see the building from blocks away. They're not always right. They're not always right.
You think with the size of these lots that they're going to get it wrong?
Yeah.
And that the monument signs aren't going to be adequate?
I've, I've ended up in somebody's driveway, and they told me I was here on what is trying to get to a state park.
This is, this is an isolated building, a commercial property, really. It's not, it's not going to impact on any of our existing residents.
Right.
Number one. Number two, the rooms that you were concerned about, you know, and I understand that, if I were a prospective tenant, and I was going to get extra light that I don't really want from that vertical sign, I wouldn't take that apartment, or I wouldn't move there at all. If everybody turns down those two apartments, they're either going to reduce the rent or find some way to fix it, and they're in business.
Yeah.
So I don't have any problem with it.
I think the units are actually in the supportive housing or, or the ones that are most impacted, but... Did I get that wrong? No? Okay. All right. I misread it, then.
So...
Mr. Math?
So, Mr. Herman, see, if, if I can summarize what you said regarding the blade signs, it is that they serve a role for wayfinding. Is that a fair assessment?
That is one of the roles they can serve, yes.
Have you done any analysis to find out how big or small they could be to do that?
I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Jadi?
Just a quick comment, basically. We can do analysis paralysis around the signs, but I believe that since the, you're going to own this property, I think, like, I think somebody made the testimony that this is in your interest to make sure the residents do not have any detrimental impact. So I, I take the testimony very seriously. I think, I think you own that, and I think, I think that's, that's fine. I had no problem with that.
Well, as I said before, I actually don't object to this. I think this, if we were in a, in a tight residential neighborhood, I think that might be a concern, or if we were on a street where this is part of an overpopulation of signs, I might have a problem with it. But, but, you know, I, I just don't think it's going to be anything that, that is negative. I just don't think anybody's going to notice it over the time of the life of the apartment complex, so I'm, I'm fine with it.
As long as it doesn't create a precedent. Not that we're obligated to follow it, but yeah.
Everything creates a precedent. That's the problem.[1759.66]
Yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none from the board. I think our public has left us, unless, are there any members of the public who wish to make any questions or comments at this time on this testimony? Do our professionals have any comments or questions on this at this time?
I think the applicant's attorney owes us something, though, because we're past ten fifteen.
I tried to be as smooth as I could, so.
I know. Mr. Anglissino, what do you have for us?
I just want to thank the board for your time and attention, and to profusely apologize to Nora on behalf of the board for asking so many questions to cause this application to go beyond ten fifteen.
All right.
You haven't changed.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this case at this time? Hearing and seeing none, any in favor of this case at this time? Hearing and seeing none, I'm assuming that was your closing argument. You don't want to.
All I got, Mr. Chairman.
Make Nora mad or cranky. All right, this closes, the evidentiary portion of this case at this time. What is the will of the board at this point? Do we want to have a discussion?
Do we need two motions, or what?
We need two motions, we have two different applications.
Mr. Chairman, I'm willing to do the first motion, if you would.
All right.
A motion to approve application number twenty-three colon five-one-five, Avalon Bay Communities Incorporated, Two Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.20, Four Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.2, Sixteen Thirty-three, Littleton Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.1.
All right, our attorney is going to walk through some of the amendments, conditions, hopes, dreams, and aspirations.
Prior conditions in the site plan approval would stay in effect. E.V. charging stations on two campus would be done on an infield basis. Comments in the engineering report, Mr. Tangiano. I think that's all I have, really not much.
I don't remember more. Anybody else, anything else?
So included, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Yes.
Including the, the comments that were made, the prior comments, the prior requirements.
Get those, that's number one. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, the ride-sharing signs on two campus. Ride-sharing parking space designation, ride-sharing parking spots on two campus.
All right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Berberio.
Yes.
Dee.
Yes.
Piero.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
DiPaolo Tano.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
All right, and then we've got, who would be willing to move twenty-three colon five-one-seven?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Zadich.
I move the motion to approve application number twenty-three colon five-one-seven, Avalon Bay Communities, Inc., One Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.7, Three Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.12, Seven Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.8. amended preliminary and final major site plan, see variance for construction of a multifamily building with surface parking facilities, indoor and outdoor amenities and landscaping.
All right, subject to the same conditions that.
The ride-sharing space was only applicable to two campus, as well as the E.V. charging stations, two-campus engineering re-letter, and the prior conditions of approval of that standard taxes, profits, and that kind of stuff. That's all I have.
Do I have a second? Second, Neely. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Berberio.
Yes.
Zadich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
DiPaolo Tano.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So.
Motion to adjourn?
You have a motion to adjourn, I, all in favor, aye. Anybody opposed? You're by yourself, Aaron Rodgers is injured.